Halt! Up! Up, halt! Be sit. Arm! Order, arm! Up! Arm! Up! Center, beak! Right, beak! Left, arm! Left leg, left!
Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated.
Thank you. The cadets participating in this evening's flag presentation were Cadet Bianca Cole, the pledge leader; the color guard was Cadet Chonito Medina; Cadet Taylor Duncan; Cadet Felipe Medina; and Cadet Gabriel Montanez. The instructors for the Memorial Junior ROTC Color Guard are Colonel Greg Barrick in command, Sergeant Major Kenneth Powell; and the principal at Memorial High School is Darren Schmidt. And I want to just remind everyone that this color guard attended the National Drill Competition this past spring, and the all-female Memorial Team won runner-up in the nation two years in a row. It is the year for the women.[133.01][133.01](APPLAUSE). For the past 20 years, Charger JROTC Color Guard Teams under the direction of Command Sergeant Major Kenneth Powell have attended Nationals held annually in early May in Daytona Beach, Florida. Memorial JROTC is the only program in the state of Oklahoma that has attended Nationals every single year. Memorial JROTC have competed in four drill meets this school year so far in Texas and Oklahoma, and have brought home 14 first-place, two second-place, and seven third-place trophies. Both Chargers and the Lady Chargers have already been accepted into Nationals again this year and plan to take first place. Thank you all so much for being here and being a part of our meeting this evening and always representing TPS with such high standards and really bringing home all the first-place awards. And we're expecting more. We have no concerns that that won't be the case. I want to welcome everyone. Thank you for being here. We have a very full agenda this evening, and we're going to try to move through it so that you can go home and bake pies or stuff your turkey or whatever you are doing getting ready for Thursday. And on that note, I just want to make sure that I take a minute to say thank you again for being here. We're all here together doing this work and thinking about our kids, and even as busy as we all seem, I'm grateful that we're all here together. So with that, we'll move into -- I want to remind everyone who has signed up to speak, you have five minutes, and if you haven't signed up to speak but you would like to, you can see Ms. Cindy Hutchings right here at the end of the board table on my right. Once we approve the consent agenda, we will not accept any more speakers for the evening. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Don't move.
Second. Okay. Once we adopt the agenda this evening, we're going to go right into the staff report after our consent agenda. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows we're kind of switching our order. Anything on the agenda, Dr. Gist, other than that?
We do have some changes tonight, Madam President and members of the board. Please correct Consent Item E4 to read "Enter into an agreement with Missouri Southern State University, setting forth the terms under which they will place student interns and student social workers with current," and then we're adding "certified district personnel for the purposes of fulfilling certification preparation requirements for the 2018-2019 school year." And I want to remind the board, this was some feedback we received at the last meeting from Board Member Marshall and also from the committee meeting from Board Member Wester and Board Member Marshall. In addition, I need to withdraw Item E14. This item will be brought back to you for consideration on a subsequent agenda. And on Item F2, please change the vendor name from "Southeast Tulsa Construction" to "Big Johnston Electric Incorporated." And please correct the last sentence in the rationale of Item G14 to read "The track record of success combined with a comprehensive plan for expansion provides adequate evidence of collegiate halls readiness to serve students in grades pre-K through 3." And then lastly, we need to withdraw Item G8. And those are the changes we have tonight, Madam President.
Okay. With the motion on the table, are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Wester.
Aye.
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 Aye. We'll move to Dr. Gist's Special Presentations, Awards, and Resolutions. Do you have anything this evening, Dr. Gist?
We do, we do, and we're very excited about tonight. I just want to do a brief interjection and say I have a little injury I'm dealing with, so if I lean back in my chair, I don't want anybody to think I'm just lounging or bored or something like that. So I just wanted you to know. So as many of you know, National Fire Prevention Week was October 7th through the 13th, and this year, the Tulsa Fire Department held a poster contest for the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students throughout Tulsa. And the theme was "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware: Fire Can Happen Anywhere." So out of all of the poster submissions, our fire chief, Ray Driscoll, chose three winners from Tulsa Public Schools, and the winning posters were displayed at the Tulsa Fire Department Headquarters. And this is so cool. Each winning poster artist received a ride to school in a fire truck. How cool is that? We got some pictures over there. And tonight, we're joined by Fire Department Representative Andrew Little, who will tell us a little bit more about the contest, the importance of spreading the word about fire prevention, and help us recognize the talented student winners. Thank you so much, Mr. Little, for being here.
Well, thank you for having me. Before I get into the beginning of the contest and the importance that it has for the Tulsa Fire Department and for Tulsa Public Schools, I just wanted to say thank you for having us. And oftentimes in my job, I hear people say, "I cannot believe you do what you do. There's no way I can do that." And I don't find myself saying this thing about many professions except teaching. I definitely can tell you that I could not do this. So thank you to all the teachers here.
Yeah, for sure.
So before National Fire Prevention Week, and all year round, we're always thinking of ways that we can help people change their behaviors and save lives. We found that one of the best vehicles for this message is through children. Oftentimes, parents are busy with work, feeding their children, making sure the bills are paid, and we don't think about these things. We're just tired. We've got to help with homework or whatever it is. So children taking this message home to their parents, saying, "Mom, let's check the smoke alarm. Can I do it? Will you help me?" They do it, it doesn't work. It leads to the solution to that. 10 years ago, the answer may have been, "We don't have the money for a smoke alarm. We don't have the money for a battery." But now, they say, "We don't have the money," and the kid says, "Tulsa Fire Department will give it to you for free." And we will. So if you don't have one, please call us, and we'll come install it. That being said, we decided to bring this poster contest so that we could work with the children and have another opportunity to impress upon them safety things and things to think about. So on Monday, October 18th, Reagan Gilmore from Clinton West was our 3rd grade winner, and her teacher's name was David McDonald. Reagan, are you here?
Yay!
So the contest kind of changed a little bit as far as the ride to school every day. I'm going to let you hide behind her a little bit if you want to. And Reagan was a little nervous when we came to get her, but did you have fun on the ride? Isn't that pretty cool? She did so good. And she had Tess Monney rode along with her in the fire truck, so she was on a live shoot on the news on the way to school, which was pretty cool. Not many of you can say you've done that. On Wednesday, October 10th, our winner was Kaylee Guera. She's a 4th grade winner from Sequoia Elementary, and her art teacher is Katherine DeCamp, who is also here. Come on, Kaylee. Kaylee, did you enjoy your ride? When we went to her house, it was so fun because her little brothers and sisters had smiles like to their ears. And I didn't realize, but apparently her little brother wanted to ride in the truck, and he did it. And when we got to the school, he was so mad at me.
Oh, no!
He would not have anything to do with me. I tried to get him to get in the truck after that, and he was not having it. He was done. And on Friday, October 12th, Zane Keithley, who is our 5th grade winner from Sequoia Elementary. And Zane's teacher is also Katherine DeCamp. And on Zane's ride, well, I would say two of the days, Engine Company 3 came, and I was so proud of them. Every day, they upped their game. They announced on the radio to all the citizens of Tulsa, "We have the winner from whatever school and grade," which is pretty neat. And the last day, they brought this little fire costume for Zane to put on to wear on his way there. And just to go further with this, when I got home that day, I called the fire chief and I said, "Chief, I know all our guys are really good, but I really want to brag on Engine 3 because they just really went out of their way and made these kids feel special." And a couple of days later, he called me, said, "You know, Engine 3 captain just called me and told me he's had a smile on his face for three days." So it benefited us. Oftentimes, when we get to interact with children and families, it's on a bad situation. There's not a lot of laughs. There's some hugs sometimes, but not a lot of laughs. So it benefited these firefighters in a way I can't even tell you. In 2017, we had 3,400 fire deaths in the United States. It's a pretty serious problem, okay? Four-fifths of those deaths occurred in homes, which means most likely at night in bed. And 2/3 of those deaths did not have a working smoke alarm. Means maybe they didn't have one, maybe the battery was dead, maybe it was broken. So these kids did a great job talking about those things, and hopefully you all will take that home tonight. You need to check those smoke alarms, you need to talk to your kids, you need to make a plan. They need to know what to do when there's a fire. So did you say you were going to take a picture of us? Can you guys come up here real quick? Let's get a picture with your teacher. Thank you all so much for having me. Have a great night.
Thank you so much, Mr. Little, and congratulations to Kaylee and Zane and Reagan. School safety is our top priority. There's nothing more important to us than making sure children are safe in our schools every day, and all of our team members are safe. And this year, I hope you know that we launched a campaign called "See, Hear, Share," and this is to encourage everyone to take action and to act upon anything that they hear that they believe might be a possible threat to school safety. And so often, students are the first ones to hear something about a threat or potential for a threat. And last spring, we gathered together a small group of students to learn more about things that encourage or discourage them from reporting a threat to an adult. And these students shared their insights, spoke on a panel to district administrators, and they developed a really important piece of our district-wide campaign. So I'm really grateful to welcome Valeria Martinez of Hale High School under the leadership of Principal Dr. Sheila Riley, Alma Fierro of Tulsa Met under the leadership of Principal Valerie Faro, Emma Line Alvezo of East Central High School under the leadership of Principal Mike Crace, and Alani Jones of Memorial High School under the leadership of Principal Darren Schmidt. And they're going to tell us a little bit more about their contributions and their thoughts about school safety. Welcome to each of you, and thank you for being here.
Hi, hi. We're really happy to be here. As Dr. Gist said, we were asked by TPS to come together and talk about school safety because nobody knows students more than students. And we felt very strongly about this. We really wanted to do something about it. And although we come from different schools and different places, we share most of the same feelings.
We wanted to see what was the best way to reach out to other people. We figured that people would think that if they speak out, that they're doing harm. So we came up with a slogan, "When you speak up, you're not making trouble, you're making change."
So a personal story on why I decided to be a part of this change and impact in our schools is because last year, as we all know the tragedy of the Parkland shooting, after that, there was a huge, I guess you can say trend type of thing where schools were getting shut down on a regular basis based on weapon threats and just rules being broken within the schools. And really, it just made me personally feel really unsafe at school. And also, an incident happened where my little sister that I love so much had a threat at her school, and a student decided to bring a weapon. That student went in front of my sister and shoved her, and at any given moment, he could have pulled out that weapon and murdered my baby sister. And it would break me to lose any of my family because I feel like I should go to school to be safe and get an education to pursue a career I want instead of worry about having to die every day.
I think what really impacted me and made me want to help make a change too was when last year, I was in middle school and all the high schoolers were evacuating into the middle school, and the teachers wouldn't tell us anything. And I was so worried, I didn't know what to do, and I was just -- my aunt seen it on the news, and she was telling me, and she was like, "Are you okay?" I was like, "Yeah, I'm fine." But anything could have happened, and I don't know what I would have done or what could have happened, but I just thank God for me having this opportunity to speak to you guys and me still being alive. So thank you.
Our goals for the Student Safety Initiative were to make schools safe again. Schools used to be the safest place that a child could go, but with previous events, that's changed. No one thinks schools are safe again. We want staff and students to take this more seriously. We want threats to be taken seriously. We want to be safe. We want to be heard. And we want to reduce the amount of threats being made towards schools. When we give students a chance to be heard, they gain the courage to share what they hear and what they say, which will make our schools safer.
"When you speak up, you're not making trouble, you're making change."
Fancy.
Thank you so much. We will be using your campaign slogan, these materials throughout the district, and we are incredibly grateful for your participation. With our students' help, we will make sure that our schools are even safer. They are very safe places to be. We want them to be even safer, and you all are helping us to do that. Thank you so much. And that concludes our special presentations tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. I want to remind everyone that we have overflow space, so if you are standing up and you want to sit down, there should be someone in the back that can help you find a seat or is there any seats in here or in any of the other rooms? Raise your hand so people know where there's available chairs, and people can come and sit down. The other thing is, is if we can get either a stool or someone to help at the podium because there's not a uniform height for people, and so it's helpful if someone can help them with the microphone or have a stool for people to step up on so we can make sure and hear everything and folks aren't struggling to be heard. We need to approve the minutes of the November 5th, 2018, regular meeting of the board, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes now.
So moved.
Second. Any comments or questions on the minutes from November 5th, 2018? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Fate?
Aye.
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 Aye. And that brings us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Dr. Decker.
Thank you, President Schreiber. I will be abstaining from E15 since I will be working at EduCare in 2019.
I do have one question regarding that same item. E15 reflects 12.5 million. Dr. Gist, is that all TPS cost or is TPS only a portion of that?
We are only a portion of that, so I appreciate you making note of that. Mr. Hutchins, do you want to elaborate on the cost structure there?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber. On the EduCare, $6 million is being funded from the 2015 bond issue for early childhood. The remainder is being furnished through EduCare.
Thank you. Any further questions on this item or any other on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Ms. Fate?
Aye.
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 Aye. And that brings us to our staff reports, and Dr. Gist will be presenting that portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, we have a very important agenda item tonight about our performance in quarter one. So we, as you know, have very specific goals that we're working toward and work that's happening in the district that is all a part of our planned Destination Excellence. And so tonight, I'm really thrilled to turn it over to our Deputy Superintendent Paula Shannon, along with members of her team and members of Team Tulsa, to share with us our performance report for quarter one. Deputy Shannon.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. Board President Schreiber and members of the board, very eager this evening to share the progress that we're making in quarter one and some of the actions that were taken. So before I hand off to Mr. Berksstreser, who will begin to walk us through our 2018-19 targets and how those were set, and then move us into our quarter one performance review, I wanted to take an opportunity to remind us of some key principles that are in Destination Excellence that ground our teams each and every day as we work to make progress as a district as a whole, as well as each of our schools and their teams work each day in a very committed way to making change, and what happens in each of our classrooms. Just a reminder that we're learners, meaning that we're data-driven. We are improving each and every day in our strategic use of data to make informed decisions. We believe that we are contributors by investing in each other. This work is hard. We learn through attempting to do things differently, so we fail forward and we invest in the development of each other. And finally, we're designers, so we strive to continuously improve and be innovative because we know the things that we have always done will not help us make the change that we need to make. So quickly, what we're going to discuss tonight, what this is, is a sharing of our 18-19 district scorecard goals. So what are the goals that we're striving to meet this year? We will be reporting on progress made during quarter one of this school year. We're providing a high-level overview of that, the most important findings and action steps. And you'll have an opportunity to hear from three of our instructional leadership directors who work closely with our principals and their leadership teams each day about what schools are learning and how school teams are responding. We'll name examples of schools that are experiencing small wins as they use best or proven practices to drive progress. What this report is not is a deep dive into root causes or an extensive data dive, so we're not going to go through 100 data slides. And we're also not going to be telling in-depth stories of schools, so you won't get a case study of a specific school. With that, one final reminder. Typically, we have handouts. The report is a little lengthy. You will be able to access this full report on the Strategic Plan part of our website tomorrow morning so that you can take a look at it digitally or download it. With that, I'm going to hand off to Mr. Berksstreser.
Thank you, Paula. Good evening, everybody. All right, so I was here in September, and we had the 2017-2018 State of the District, and we went over our scorecard measures, and hopefully a lot of this will seem very familiar. Do want to remind everybody too, when we talk about our school goals to kick this off, our schools set goals which create the district goal every year. So that's how those are formed, and this slide kind of talks a little bit about that. 2018-19 is the second year that we've had this process in Tulsa Public Schools. So this is Destination Excellence Scorecard on the screen, and there are four sections that really help us keep track of what matters most. And I'll go through each section to just talk about our targets for 2018-19. So the first section is college and career-ready graduates. We're really wanting to understand when our students leave Tulsa Public Schools, what are they prepared for? Graduation rate. Early in 2019, we hope to be able to present our preliminary graduation rate for this past year for 2018, so look forward to that in the coming months. For our SAT college readiness measure, our target for 2018-19 is 30%, so 30% of our students that test on SAT, meeting that college-ready benchmark in both math and reading. I do want to point out that our schools use PSAT scores, so their 10th graders that take the PSAT, they use that information to help inform their targets. And last year, we had 3/4 of our 10th graders take the PSAT, which was a significant increase from prior years. But we did have lower PSAT scores, which is why that target is a little bit lower than where we were last year. Second section of the scorecard is academic excellence, so this is really where we're trying to keep track of how are our students progressing as they go through the system and get closer towards graduation. Two things I want to talk about really briefly on this slide are proficiency and growth and the way that we in Tulsa Public Schools are defining those. Proficiency means that a student is at or above the 50th percentile nationally, and they're meeting that benchmark in math and reading. Growth is an estimate of how much the typical student in that grade level that started with the same score grows during a school year. So when you see the targets around percent of students meeting projected growth, that's where that's coming from. And nationally, 50% of students meet their projected growth. So you can see our targets on the screen. I also want to note that proficiency is very difficult to move at the school level, especially when you have lots of students that are very low in percentile. It's going to take several years of them meeting and exceeding growth to see proficiency move. Third section is around school culture. And first thing I want to note is that later on in this school year, we look forward to being able to really dive deeply into the SEL survey data, so social-emotional learning that we're starting to learn more and more about. Attendance and chronic absenteeism. Just want to point out that there's a change in 2018-19 to the way that suspensions are tracked. Suspensions count as absences now. That's a change in Oklahoma. And our goals that you see on the screen account for that change. So last year, if we had assumed that we had that same rule for suspensions, our end-of-year attendance rate would have been 91.5%. And you can see that our target this year is 92%. That's the equivalent of 30,000 instructional days. So that's a pretty aggressive target, but that's what we're shooting for across the district. And then our chronic absenteeism target is also quite a bit lower than where we would have ended up last year with this change in the suspension rule. Suspension measure, that's a very important indicator of school culture, student engagement, and that's really why we have that on the scorecard. And our target this year reflects 250 fewer suspended students. So that would represent another decrease after the past several years. So really briefly, why do we measure chronic absenteeism as opposed to something like truancy? We've probably all heard these terms. Short answer is that truancy is something that is tracked at the period level, and it's really only including unexcused absences. Typically, when you think about truancy, you think about punitive consequences that sometimes can actually push students out of school even more. In Tulsa Public Schools, we're very focused on chronic absenteeism. This actually includes all absences regardless of the reason that a student is out of school. And we're really trying to focus on the academic consequences of lost instructional time. Here's a quote at the bottom from a recent study. "Evidence indicates that it is how many days a student misses that matters, not why they miss them." That's why we really look at chronic absenteeism. And then the last section of the scorecard is organizational health. So we're tracking novice teacher retention rate, and as you can see, we had a huge increase in the in the number of novice teachers that decided to stay with TPS from 2016-17 to 2017-18. And our target this year is 80 percent, which would represent another increase in novice teacher retention. Employee engagement will be measured in January. We'll have a district-wide survey that goes out to employees. We're really trying to focus as an organization on understanding our employees' experiences and how we can continue to better support them. And then the last measure in this section is district office service. Destination Excellence talks a lot about how schools are at the center of everything that happens, and our job at district office is to support schools in, in supporting students. This year, we have a more comprehensive set of questions and are really encouraging a high response rate so that we can have a very thorough understanding of how schools are perceiving the service that they're receiving from district office. All right, so with that said, want to dive into quarter one data. We don't have data for all of the scorecard measures at this point, but we do have data on attendance, and we have suspension data, and then we have our proficiency from the fall administration of the MAP assessment, which is what we use to measure reading and So so far, average daily attendance rate is down across the district, and as you can see, this is across elementary, middle, and high school, but particularly, you see a .5 percentage point decrease in high school attendance compared to the same point in time last year. So attendance is down. And chronic absenteeism, the percentage of students that, that are missing at least 10 percent of days is also worse than last year at the same point in time. Just want to point out that 30 percent of our students at the end of quarter one in high school had already missed at least 10 percent of days. This is a really critical indicator that, that we're focused on. Economically disadvantaged students are also more likely to be chronically absent. The new suspension rule that I mentioned a few slides ago has played a role in the decrease, so again, suspensions count as student absences this school year, whereas before, they didn't. And so far this school year, 730 unique students have been suspended across the district for a total of 3,200 days. So we have 3,200 days of absences that are, are contributing to those attendance rates that I showed you. And then consistent with our State of the District presentation in September, wanted to just point out again that we do continue to see differences in chronic absenteeism rates by race and ethnicity. Another thing to point out is that nearly every race and ethnicity has seen higher chronic absenteeism rates so far this year compared to the same point in time last year, something we're continuing to monitor. With that said, I want to hand it off to Robert Shornick, one of our secondary instructional leadership directors, to talk about some themes.
Thanks, Sean. So as you can see from the previous slide, there are gaps that we're aiming to close this year around attendance and chronic absenteeism. Matter of fact, most elementary schools are launching attendance teams this year using best practice from Attendance Works. Attendance Works is like an organization that provides technical assistance, tools that help communities, schools, and school districts to monitor and work together to address chronic absenteeism. Add to that, our secondary schools are continuing to strengthen their efforts and continuously building their attendance teams. It should also be noted that secondary schools have begun a strong chronic absenteeism campaign, similar to the one that we did as it relates to seeking great students, that incorporates targeted touchpoints or home visits of students that are chronically absent. And lastly, 40-plus schools are working directly with Attendance Works and working with Hedy Chang across the school year in regards to professional learning. With these efforts, we have noticed some bright spots also throughout the district. Specifically, at Grimes, Wayman Tisdale, Project Accept, ECDC Bunch, they're all seeing significant increases in attendance and chronic absenteeism. At this point, I'll turn it back to Sean.
All right, so then when we look at suspension data, suspension rates so far are very similar to last year at the same point in time, so you can see the green line compared to the, the red and blue lines from the last two years. And something that, that we know is that the middle grades, specifically 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th grades, have the highest percentage of suspended students. And students in these grades often need additional services and supports to stay engaged and on track academically. And then one more thing to call out from our quarter one data is that African-American students remain disproportionately suspended compared to their peers. So 4.2 percent of our African-American students were suspended during quarter one compared to just over 1 percent of white students during the same period. Want to hand it off to Dr. Phyllis Lovett to talk about some of what she's seeing in
I'd like to first start off by saying that district-wide, our behavior coaches and behavior specialists have been responsive to the needs of our building leaders. They've been providing supports for high-flying students through behavior interventions, and they've been working, they've been working hand-in-hand with our principals to, to, to support alternatives to suspensions. In our elementary schools, there is a direct connection between the high concentration of novice teachers and the higher rate of suspensions and discipline issues. At Gilchrist, Marshall Hawthorne, and in our non-Montessori grades at Emerson, they all have higher suspensions compared to last year. And this has contributed, we believe, to the high number of novice teachers in those schools. As a district, we do have a large number of novice teachers, and we're continuing to learn how we need to support them. Because of our large numbers, we, we focus on giving them additional supports and touchpoints to assist them with classroom management. That being said, we do have some bright spots that I'd like to highlight. In Tulsa Public Schools, we have five SEL, social-emotional learning pilot schools that are experiencing lower suspensions. At these schools, the school leaders and their staffs have stepped up to lead the way in providing the culture of learning, they've stepped up to, to lead the way in improving the culture of learning in their schools by integrating social-emotional learning into their school day. Pilot schools assist us as a district in figuring out just how, what best practices we can use to then expand into other schools. Three of our SEL pilot schools, Robertson, Council Oak, and Eugene Fields, already had low suspensions, but Robertson and Eugene Fields have zero suspensions at this time. At Whitman, suspensions are down compared to this time last year. And at McClure Elementary, they, they show no difference in their suspensions from last year, but when we compare McClure's suspensions, suspension data from 2016, their suspensions are much lower compared from 2016 to now. In our secondary schools, overall, fighting is the number-one reason for suspensions in eight of our 11 middle school and junior high schools, and it's the number-one or two reason for suspensions in half of our high schools. But we do have some bright spots in our secondary schools. We have schools that have much lower suspensions compared to this time last year. At Tulsa Met, Rogers Junior High, The Road Middle, and Webster High, along with Central High, McLean High, and Rogers High, they're all experiencing lower suspensions this year compared to last year. At Central, they're focusing on routines and rituals while building strong relationships utilizing the CT3 real-time coaching. At McLean and Rogers, they have strong college summit programs focusing on building relationships, including strong mentor relationships with, with adults. Social-emotional learning not only emphasizes building strong relationships between students and teachers, it also emphasizes building relationships between families and schools. Our secondary and, and elementary schools that have a strong focus on social-emotional learning are seeing some positive results with our students and are experiencing lower suspensions. I'll turn it back to Sean now.
All right, and then to wrap up, we'll look at the fall proficiency data that we, that we have on our students in math and reading. So overall proficiency, the percentage of students that are meeting the 50th percentile or above in math and reading is at 26 percent in the fall, which is actually right online with where our students performed in the spring. Do want to spotlight one of these particular measures, though, third-grade reading proficiency. Gaps begin early for students, and they persist throughout a student's career. And as you can see, there are pretty significant differences between students from different races and ethnicities and their third-grade reading proficiency. Overall, our third-grade cohort also is lower than our third-grade cohort last year, so need to continue to focus to increase their growth during the year. And it's not on the slide, but one more thing just to mention again is that lower socioeconomic status students are less likely to be proficient. All that said, our schools serve a very diverse population, not only in terms of race and ethnicity, but also economic status, students with disabilities, multilingual learners. We serve all sorts of students across Tulsa Public Schools. And as we continue to mature in, in our understanding and our investment in data, we're learning more and more about which factors predict achievement, but also which factors don't predestinate. And we can learn more about which, which schools are really breaking the trends to continue to understand how we can improve as a system. So with that said, I'm going to hand it off to Kayla Robinson, one of our elementary instructional leadership directors.
2017-18 was the first year that Tulsa Public Schools collected academic progress data for all of our students in grades K through 10. We used the Measures of Academic Progress, also known as MAP, or MAP testing. So after a year of collecting this data, these are three of the headlines of the things that we discovered. So we noticed that there continue to be performance gaps between different subgroups of students. We are beginning to see schools here significantly growing all groups of students and starting to close the achievement gap. And overall proficiency at the school level doesn't change quickly. Sean stated that earlier in the presentation. This is particularly a big challenge for us. What we must do is turn our attention to taking steps to prevent students that start school ready to learn from ever dropping below proficiency. We also have to put students that are behind on a pathway to reaching proficiency by essentially doubling down on the supports that they have, giving them the attention that they need through teacher supports and other resources, our time, our people, and our, our funds. The best thing we have now is that we have more of the right information at the right time, and it's in the hands of the right people to impact these trends. ILDs and school leaders and teachers now use our data dashboard, our own data dashboard that gives us real-time data access for many of these measures on a daily basis and quarterly for the MAP data. These are the tools that we can use to know how all of our students are doing, all our schools and all our students and student groups. We continue to get better and better at strategically aligning our time and people and resources in a way that supports students and teachers in that extra effort to reach proficiency. We are data-driven. Deputy Shannon stated that. We are a data-driven school district. Our responding to school-level data is no longer a once-a-year school event, but it's a component of our daily routines and rituals toward continued improvement.
Kayla, wrap up these last 50 slides. I want to note what time it is right now.
6:53.
And usually, these presentations are forever. So finally, it's, it's not lost on us, we're on a similar trajectory as we were last year, and that creates great urgency. We have to continue to dig in, we have to, like, work together to provide the right supports at the right time to help our young people achieve success. One of the things that, that Kayla mentioned, but is really important to note, is on a monthly basis, instructional leadership directors are working with principals and school teams to support teachers in making adjustments to the plan the school has to improve reading proficiency, to improve math proficiency, to put a dent in attendance. We're continuing to do that as well by supporting our principals. Each principal has a goal that they've set that's very aggressive and they're doubling down on. They have the opportunity to learn from each other through goal groups that they belong to, that they meet in at our School Leader Institute on a monthly basis. And finally, we're doing a, we're making improvements in the area of how we think about what we're learning month-to-month and quarter-to-quarter in the annual planning process, so that we can support our school leaders and teachers in making decisions earlier that impact on student achievement. Again, this presentation will be available on our website tomorrow, so you can download it, take a closer look. There are a series of slides in the appendix as well that provide more information, and we are happy to answer any questions that board members may have. Thank you.
I do have a question, Ms. Shannon, and I know that we, given the full agenda that we have, we push to really present these facts and not do a whole lot about what, how detail on how we're working on this. But one of the things that I wanted to ask about is when we see, we've had a lot of conversations recently around chronic absenteeism and truancy, given some of the, the truancy ordinance that came before the city, and in those conversations, we talked a lot about our attendance teams, and the schools form attendance teams. Is, talk a little bit about what that means to have an attendance team and what the work of the attendance team is.
One of the instructional leadership directors want to take that? They'll give you a better answer than I will.
Thank you. So the attendance team basically is generated like, it's made up of your, your registrars, your assistant principals, your deans, outside agencies, these people coming together to create these interventions and these strategies to really nail down specifically what can we do to help assist this school community and these families.
So if, for example, someone is not, doesn't have the clothing that they need, the uniform assistance, that team can come together and figure a resource in the community that can help and provide that to them.
Absolutely. Yes, spot on.
So a great example is Officer Stovall, who's in our campus police department, learned about a student through attendance team that had been absent for a few days, went out and did a home visit to support the school, and learned from the family that they didn't have clothing for the student, and were, were, you know, very embarrassed and want to send their, their child to school improperly clothed. So Officer Stovall went back to the school that has a community closet with clothing in it, brought the family clothing, and that student has been back in school and has not been absent since then. Thank you.
And to add to that, based upon the data, we can basically nail down specifically what, what kids or what students are more at risk, and so that we can truly identify and target those supports.
Thank you. Other questions?
You guys have examples of the door hangers, so when the teams go out to make visits and maybe the family's not there, they can leave the door hanger to show that we care and that we stand by to support.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much, each of you, and, and the members of Team Tulsa and your colleagues who I know you are representing. We really appreciate the awesome work that's happening, and, and we do have a very strong sense of urgency to make sure that we are tackling these numbers and getting better results, because what we know is that behind these numbers, behind the data, are our children, our, our little human beings and families who we are responsible for and want to make sure are achieving and coming to school every day and being successful. So thank you to each of you for your presentation, and that concludes our staff report tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Gis. From there, we'll move into our action agenda, and item F1 is a motion to adopt a resolution whereby the Tulsa Public School Board of Education opposes the proposed rule change to the public charge. And before I ask for a motion on that, we had several speakers on this item last meeting. We don't have any this evening, but I'm going to ask my colleague, Ms. Wester, to read it, the resolution first in Spanish, and then I'll follow up in English, and then we'll... we'll get a motion and take questions.
Thank you. Resolución del Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa en oposición al cambio de la regla propuesta de public charge. Considerando que el Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa declara que es un derecho de todos los niños, sin importar su estatus migratorio, acceder a una educación pública gratuita desde el jardín hasta el doceavo grado, y el distrito da la bienvenida y apoya a todos los estudiantes. Y considerando que el Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa sabe que aproximadamente el 22% de nuestros estudiantes son estudiantes del idioma inglés, y el 35% de nuestros estudiantes hablan un idioma diferente al inglés en su hogar. Y considerando que el Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa honra y celebra nuestra diversidad trabajando para ser educadores culturalmente receptivos y construyendo una cultura de inclusión y aceptación. Y considerando que el Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa comparte la responsabilidad de interrumpir las desigualdades educativas para que los factores sociales y culturales como la raza y el idioma ya no sean predictores del éxito de los estudiantes. Y considerando que el Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa sabe que el cambio de la regla propuesta USCIS 2010-0012-0001, mejor conocido como carga pública, podría afectar la capacidad de una persona para obtener la ciudadanía si ha utilizado el programa de asistencia de nutrición suplementaria conocido como SNAP, Medicaid, Medicare D, y asistencia de vivienda. Y considerando que el Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa sabe que muchas de nuestras familias dependen del programa de asistencia de nutrición suplementaria SNAP para su nutrición, asistencia de vivienda para un ambiente seguro, y Medicaid para su salud y bienestar. Y considerando que el Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa entiende que la regla propuesta crearía más temor entre nuestras familias, lo que podría hacer que renuncien a estos beneficios esenciales, lo cual afectaría que nuestros estudiantes obtengan una educación adecuada. Y considerando que el Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa tiene un gran interés en asegurar que todas nuestras familias tengan los recursos que necesitan para que nuestros estudiantes tengan éxito. Y considerando que el Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa sabe que debido al cambio de la regla, nuestros estudiantes correrán un mayor riesgo que resultarán en una salud deficiente, mayor inseguridad alimentaria, y mayores tasas de inestabilidad de vivienda. Se resuelve que el Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa se opone firmemente a la regla propuesta y anunciada por el Departamento de Seguridad Nacional de los Estados Unidos el 10 de octubre de 2018. Y se resuelve que el Consejo de Educación de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa presentará comentarios públicos en nombre de las Escuelas Públicas de Tulsa durante el periodo de 60 días de comentarios públicos para implorar a la agencia que elimine el cambio de regla propuesto. Las personas pueden enviar un comentario público sobre el cambio de la regla visitando la página web de la Coalición para el Futuro de las Familias de Oklahoma en www Puntocom
Thank you, Ms. Wester. I am going to read in English now, and it will never sound that beautiful. Whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education states that it is the right of every child, regardless of immigration status, to access a free public K through 12 education, and the district welcomes and supports all students. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education knows that approximately 22% of our students are English-language learners, and 35% of our students have a language other than English spoken in their home. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education honors and celebrates our diversity by working to be culturally responsive educators and building a culture of inclusion and acceptance. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education shares the responsibility to interrupt educational inequities so that social and cultural factors such as race and language are no longer predictors of student success. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education knows that the proposed rule change USCIS-2010-0012-0001, better known as public charge, could affect an individual's ability to gain citizenship if they have utilized the supplemental nutrition assistance program, or SNAP, Medicaid, Medicare D, and housing assistance. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education knows that many of our families rely on the SNAP program for their nutrition, housing assistance for a safe environment, and Medicaid for health, for their health and well-being. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education understands that the proposed rule change would create more fear amongst our families, potentially causing them to forego these essential benefits, which will affect our students' ability to attain a proper education. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education has a vested interest to ensure all of our families have the resources they need for our students to be successful. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education knows that because of the rule change, our students will be at greater risk of poor health outcomes, increased food insecurity, and increased rates of housing instability. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education strongly opposes the proposed rule announced by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security on October 10th, 2018, and therefore let it be resolved that the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education will be submitting public comment on behalf of Tulsa Public Schools during the 60-day public comment period to implore the agency to remove the proposed rule change. Individuals can submit comments on this rule change by visiting the Coalition for the Future of Oklahoma Families webpage at https://www.ProtectOKFamilies.org/Action. And I would urge all of you to do that if you do agree with this resolution. Oftentimes, when we engage in advocacy, you'll get a prepared message that says, here's what to say, talk to your legislator, ask him to increase education funding, or things like that, and it's something that is submitted, that you sub-sign your name to, but it's a prepared message. In this case, when we're commenting on administrative rule, each individual comment has to be submitted. So you have to go on and comment and make your own comments. So this is going to take an action step on your part individually, and you can link to this website through our website, or ask any of us about it if you want to talk about it. It's kind of hard to understand, but the bottom line is, is that it could prevent our families from getting the services they need to be healthy, whole people, and what they deserve when they come to school every day. So we need to make sure that we do our part to make sure that this rule change does not occur, and that's going to be by this kind of community-wide effort. Many organizations have joined this coalition throughout the city of Tulsa, and I'm sure throughout the state of Oklahoma and across the country, to say, state their opposition to it. Are there questions from board members? I think we need a motion.
Move approval.
Second, any other comments or questions at this point? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Faith?
Aye.
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 That brings us to item F2, which is to approve the contract with By Johnson Electric, Inc., Tulsa Construction Integrity Energy Partners LLC, Seven Lighthouse Electric LLC for LED lighting replacements at various locations, and further approve the assignment of contract assigning said contract to BOK Financial Equipment Finance, lesser under the Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement dated November 1st, 2018. The assignment of contract is necessary to facilitate the financing of the LED lighting replacement project as contemplated in Equipment Lease Purchase approved October 8th, 2018, Agenda Item E13, page 7. This is a total cost of the contract is $4.5 million and will be paid by the BOK Financial Equipment Finance under the terms of the Equipment and Lease Purchase Agreement. Is there a motion to approve item F2?
Move approval.
Second, any questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Wester.
Aye.
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 Aye. Brings us to item F3, which is a recommendation to approve the purchase of 19 HVAC rooftop units from Carrier Enterprises LLC of Tulsa for Tulsa Met High School. This is a cost of $61,132, and this is being done because the equipment at the Met is outdated and unrepairable. Is there a motion to approve item F3?
So moved.
Second, any questions on this item? I do have one question. Was this in our ongoing sort of bond dollars for repair and replacement? Was this something that had been tagged as a maintenance item that we were expecting?
Thank you, Dr. Schreiber, Board President. This was, came, comes out of the HVAC replacement, but these were unforeseen, it was an unforeseen breakage. So, but there is HVAC repairs in the bond issue.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll call for the vote, Ms. Wester.
Aye.
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 Aye. That's going to bring us to our information agenda, and that will be Dr. Gist leading us to that portion of tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. So I want to make sure that you know that information items are items that we bring before the board for consideration and discussion, and there isn't an action taken for information items on the night that we discuss them. If they do have an action associated with them, that would come at a future meeting when that item goes on either the consent agenda or as a standalone action item on the agenda. So I'm going to start with information items G1 through G10, and these will be presented by our deputy superintendent, Paula Shannon. Ms. Shannon?
Ms. Shannon, before you begin, Mr. Huffheinz is going to speak on items G2, G3, G5, G6, and we'll go ahead and have item G11 as well. If you want to go ahead and present, and then Mr. Huffheinz, when Ms. Shannon gets through items G1 through 10, you can come and speak. And I do want to remind everybody that we will keep to a very tight five minutes. Unfortunately, I've been put in situations where I had to cut little kids off, so please don't make me do that. I feel horrible. But we will stop the microphone at the five minutes, and it's only just to keep things rolling. I'm going to, I'm going to let Ms. Shannon present the items, and then you can speak to them, Mr. Huffheinz.
Mr. Huffheinz, I'll give you the signal.
Oh, very good, thank you.
I'm a little lonely over here this evening. Items G, in the interest of time, items G1, G4, G5, G6, and G7 are routine. If you have questions about those, I'd be happy to answer them now. I'll speak a bit more to a few other items. Item G2 is a recommendation to amend the Memorandum of Understanding with Youth Services of Tulsa that the board approved on the July 2nd, 2018 Agenda as Item E7, to include utilizing the Office of Adolescent Health Grant Funds to reimburse costs associated with the sex education component of Strong Tomorrow's and related curricula and materials. Brief note there, Youth Services of Tulsa was awarded this federal grant and recently invited TPS to apply for a piece of these federal grant monies, given the Strong Tomorrow's program track record and evidence-based model of demonstrated success. And so we're asking you to approve our acceptance of those grant monies to offset costs for that program. Item G3 is a recommendation to amend item E20 approved on the June 18th, 2018 Agenda to include renewing the contract for the 1819 school year with Counseling and Recovery Services of Oklahoma Incorporated operating the Calm Center. Just transparently, the contract with the Calm Center was inadvertently left off of the June 18th Agenda. However, the staffing required to support the Calm Center were part of our 1819 staffing plan that we reviewed with the board in the spring, so that is not adding additional costs to the district, it's correcting an oversight. Pause there, see if you have any questions on those two items related to schools. Okay? Item G8 was removed, so I shall not go there. Item G9 is a routine approval of position creation deletions. Just a reminder that the, these positions are reviewed and discussed at the board's Talent Management Committee that meets monthly. This particular create-delete is related to a bit of restructuring we're doing with the transition of Chief Green to assume the superintendentcy in Jackson, Mississippi. We're restructuring, and instead of having a chief of schools and hiring for that vacancy, we are transforming it into a deputy chief schools officer. The deputy chief schools officer will be responsible for supporting educational excellence across all networks of schools, will provide direct supervision for the instructional leadership directors, some of whom you heard from this evening, and will work under the direct supervision of the deputy superintendent. And in close collaboration with the deputy chief academic officer to ensure a tight coordination between the implementation of best practices and the design of those best practices by the teaching and learning teams. Happy to answer any questions. And finally, item G10 is a recommendation to enter into a partnership agreement with Northwest Evaluation Association, NWEA. It's the organization that runs or houses the MAP assessment that we talked about earlier this evening. We want to work with them to correlate the Oklahoma State Testing Program scores with the NWEA assessment scores to help us continue to better understand our student achievement on MAP against the Oklahoma State Testing Program. That is no cost to the district. Any questions? Awesome. With that, Mr. Huffheinz, you're up.
Thank you, Deputy Shannon. Peace, yes, peace. Greetings to our Honorable Superintendent Dr. Gist, our Madam President Suzanne Schreiber, and each of our honorable Tulsa Public School Board members and honorable staff and team. We are grateful for all the teachers and citizens of this great city, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It's a joy to be with you on this 19th day of November in the year of our loving Lord Jesus Christ, 2018. Yes, Agenda Item G2. This is encouraging, seeing TPS continuing to offer programs in an attempt to empower our children to make healthy life choices. I'll say, simply instilling in our children basic biblical principles goes a long way. The Bible is God's word and is right and true. Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Gist, and TPS team for doing all you can to empower our children to make healthy life choices. G3, recommendation, amend item E20 approved, approved on the, on the June 18th, 2018 Agenda to include renewing the contract for the 2018-2019 school year with Counseling and Recovery Services of Oklahoma, Inc. Counseling, counseling. As we promote counseling, based on God's word, the Holy Bible, God's love letter to us, we can be assured the Holy Spirit, the counselor of counselors, will stay involved and will bring clear direction to our valued students. Yes. G5, yes to this recommendation. Enter into an agreement with Guthrie Green and the City of Tulsa for the use of downtown streets and the Guthrie Green grounds and facilities for the Tulsa Public Schools. The Guthrie Green is a beautiful urban park donated by members of our respected Jewish community. May we continue to honor the Jewish members of our Tulsa family and their original homeland, Israel. Yes. G6, yes on this recommendation. Enter into a lease agreement with the ORU Mayby Center for the 53rd Annual Basketball Tournament of Champions to be held December 27th through 29th, 2018. ORU, this great university was founded by a man, Oral Roberts, who loved God and people, a man who desired for the world to experience the healing power of Jesus Christ, the Son of God, and for people to be able to hear the voice of the Holy Spirit. Yes. And the Mayby Center is a great place for the gathering of champions. G11, recommendation, approve renewal of the charter school contract with Tulsa School of the Arts and Sciences, TSAS, for a five-year term. This renewal will authorize TSAS to continue to operate as a charter school for 7th through 12th grades. A quick story here. One day, several years ago, a knock came on my door, and when I opened the door, there stood a man with his arms full of groceries and a smile brighter than the noonday sun. stood a man with his arms full of groceries and his smile brighter than the noonday sun. He was offering food. Well, my family was doing well, thank the good Lord, and I trust he was able to give the food to someone else, but I saw the heart of this man, and my wife and I have been honored to become his friends, and we are to, to this day, his friends. This gentleman, who is now an instructor with Tulsa School of the Arts and Sciences, may not know this, but his act of kindness was some of the inspiration behind the Friendly Neighbor Association my wife and my son and I founded in 2004, where help and free services are offered to 36 homes in our area. Mr. Ademola Adamai is an absolute gift. He is sharp, brilliant, and it's a joy to be around. His skill sets and gift clusters are remarkable. Kudos to TPS for hiring Mr. Adamai, and I sense his heart is typical of the hearts of the excellent instructors we have at Tulsa School of the Arts and Sciences. Yes, thank you. And thank you, President Schreiber, for your excellent leadership.
Items G11 through G14 are items that we're bringing to you, and these are very important public charter school-related recommendations. We have three charter schools coming before the Board today for consideration, and we are recommending the Tulsa School of Arts and Sciences for a routine five-year renewal. We're also recommending their expansion to include 6th grade. We are recommending Tulsa Honor Academy for an expansion to serve grades 9 through 12. And finally, we're recommending Collegiate Hall for an expansion to serve pre-K through 3rd grade students. I want to just be clear, my support, our support for these public charter schools comes after an extensive review of performance, which you'll hear about, and it's an expression of our commitment to making sure that we're creating even more high-quality options for children in Tulsa. Our goal is to serve all students well, and through that, to attract and retain families in ever-growing numbers. And we will accomplish this by combining the efforts that you've heard a little bit about tonight and the work that's happening in our neighborhood schools, and we have so many amazing, excellent, high-quality neighborhood schools, along with a small set of trusted and very high-quality public charter school options. So I'm going to turn it over now to Andrea Castaneda, and she will be sharing some of the charter school information and present more specifically these items. Chief Castaneda.
Madam President, Dr. Gist, members of the Board, thank you for taking these items up for consideration tonight. We do have four unique items. We have, as Dr. Gist shared, one renewal and three expansions. So before I jump into that, I do want to take just a minute to share and remind all of the viewers and the audience and in Facebook Live about the important role that you guys play as authorizers. We, we do have the privilege and also the responsibility of having the state's highest-performing charter sector. It is, it is small, but it is deeply committed to quality on all fronts. And one of the ways that that happens is that you guys hold nationally benchmarked standards for quality for them. We assure that through regular monitoring, and in your packets, what you have for each of the schools under consideration is a one-page summary of their performance against your charter framework. It's a high-level dashboard underneath which is, is a lot of criterion-driven detail about what excellence looks like, and people can find information about that on the charter page of our website, and there you can see all of the detail that helps distinguish all of the standards from one another. So with that basic backdrop around the important decisions you're considering today, I will jump into item G11, which is the renewal recommendation for Tulsa School for the Arts and Sciences. This is a routine renewal item in the sense that this school has been meeting our performance expectations, not merely under this charter term, but for over 17 years. They're one of the, the oldest charter schools in our district and even more broadly in the state. One of the things that you can see from their one-page performance summary is that they are exceeding our district averages for graduation rates with an 83% graduation rate. They also are exceeding both the district and state averages for ACT composite score performance. As a high school, they're doing an excellent job preparing students for readiness and to enter into the world of college and into the world of work. In their broader performance, what they offer is a rich set of arts-based opportunities, jazz and rock and roll. They also have STEM programming, and they have debate. They also just contribute a rich set of traditions to our portfolio of high schools in the district. They are one of our oldest partners, one of our most generous partners, and we bring this to you as a routine recommendation for their five-year renewal.
Are there any questions on this item? Present G12, and then we'll invite our speakers. Before you do that, too, I just want to check, are there any open seats in here? If you have a seat near you that somebody can't see, raise your hand. There's one seat up here, and a couple back here. If anybody wants to sit down, there are chairs, and of course, we have the overflow rooms as well.
G12 is the related item, so we're still on the Tulsa School for the Arts and Sciences. This is a request for the opportunity to expand to a 6th grade in 2020, 2021 school year. So not next year, but the year after that. Students in the 6th grade, and this comes largely as a result of many years of conversations with parents where they talk about the discontinuity of completing a 5th grade, 6th grade, and picking up with a TSAS opportunity starting in 7th.
I'll invite our speakers now. We'll start with Ademola Adamai. I want to thank Mr. Huffheinz for helping me with that pronunciation, and going forward, if I mispronounce anyone's name, I apologize in advance. I'm just going to let you know who will be following that. So then we'll have Jalen Davis, Amber Whitlatch, and Dr. Ellen Dollar Hyde McCoy.
Thank you. Thank you all for giving me this wonderful opportunity to, to speak to you all, and I thank General Houghheinz for, for those kind words. The very first day I set my foot on a TSAS at the old building in Secoia, when I met with Lisa and the former executive director Rick Doss, that was when I really knew that I was in a school that respected and honored the profession of teachers. They took me by the hands, they hired me, and they trusted me in what I was going to deliver to these students. TSAS has totally transformed and helped me to see these students as if they're my own, teaching them on a day-to-day basis, giving them the best, the best of math education. As you can hear from our friends and all of our people around the community, and you hear from parents as well, when it comes to TSAS as a school, the environment alone, the love and the respect that we show students, we're treating them like precious human beings like they are, making them think on their own, and the kind of respect that they give teachers in our profession, giving us autonomy, not just to just do what we like, but to teach them in the way that they can understand. It has built a community of trust amongst the parents, amongst communities around. I mean, Parent Teachers Association meetings is like fellowship. I'm like, we can have pizza with our parents, just as, that's how cool it is at TSAS. To our 6th grade is just a blessing. We just get these students at a younger age, they come in, and we can train them, build them up, just the way we do the 7th graders, the 8th graders, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th. Thank you, TPS, for giving TSAS an opportunity to teach. Thank you, TSAS, for giving me an opportunity to be a teacher to these precious students. A dream that I've always had since I came to this country from Nigeria.
I wanted to thank everybody again today for allowing me to come and speak tonight. So whenever I was looking for which high school I wanted to attend, I obviously wanted to find a school with academic rigor and a place that would prepare me academically for the real world, but more than that, I wanted a place that I could grow personally, and that's exactly what I found at the Tulsa School of Arts and Sciences. And so in TSAS, the relationship between the teachers and the students is so personal and respectful, and it clearly creates this healthy relationship that transcends the classroom. And so I think this is one of the biggest components that made TSAS a transformative experience for me, and it really allowed me to kind of grow as a person and flourish within my community. And then within this, we find student empowerment, and so it's not just within the TSAS community, but it's within the Tulsa community as a greater whole that the TSAS students are allowed to flourish, and so they are involved in various activities all across the city, and that is only bettering the community that we, that we have. And so because of this, I think it would be so great and so impactful to have a 6th grade and expand the TSAS community to include the 6th grade, not only because of, to better the continuity between the elementary school and the middle school experience, but also because they could only get an earlier start on establishing those relationships and building that strength that I've talked about and that I've found in my own personal experience. So by doing this, it not only reduces the undue stress on the students and the families by forcing them to go through the school transfer experience between the 6th grade and the 7th grade years, they would again be able to better themselves further and sooner than they would have they have to go to a different school because of this amazing opportunities that TSAS does provide that I have found within my own experience. And so it is because of all these reasons that I think TSAS does deserve and should expand to have a 6th grade so that it can actually be better for the students and the greater Tulsa community as a whole.
My name is Amber Whitlatch. I'm a six-year TPS employee and a three-year proud TSAS mom. I want to thank the Board for letting me speak, and for Dan Han, the principal of the middle school at TSAS, for inviting me to come speak. We chose Mayo Elementary in TPS for our child, partly because it was a direct feeder school to Thoreau and Booker T. Washington, which at the time was what we wanted, but when 2015 rolled around, we started looking for alternatives for our son, so we looked at Carver, we looked at Edison for middle school, because it was a district of choice, and that's what we, we were looking for, a new, a different choice. But our son did attend 6th grade at Thoreau, and aside from receiving a Student of the Year recognition letter, there wasn't anything especially positive about his experience, and there was plenty of room for improvement. So we were thrilled to hear that TSAS was going to offer a 7th grade in the 2016-17 school year, and we signed up immediately. So I chatted with some TSAS alumni that I knew around town, they had turned out to be pretty good kids, and they all gave glowing recommendations about the academics, about the faculty, the staff, the culture, and so we chose TSAS for our child because it more closely resembled Mayo Elementary in its pre-project Schoolhouse days. It was the environment that we wanted for him and for ourselves. So I wish TSAS had offered a 6th grade in 2015 so that we could avoided moving our kid more than was necessary, and I'm not unique in that. I think a lot of moms and dads feel that way.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. School governance is a complex task, and as the members of the Board of Education, I know that you are dedicated advocates to public schools. Thank you for the time and energy that you devote to decisions such as the one you will soon make about a school that's particularly, particularly important to me. I'm privileged to serve as the executive director at an independent public school that operates under a charter. My name is Ellen Dollar Hyde McCoy, and I'd like to take four minutes to tell you about Tulsa School of Arts and Sciences and our request for a 6th grade. Before I go further, I'd like to take a moment to ask the TSAS community to make a little noise, wave your hand so that we can see. So let's take a moment to look back and to look forward. TSAS was founded in 2001 by a group of progressive teachers, and our school continues to take pride in our reputation as an incubator for innovative teaching and learning. Our school motto is "TSAS is Home," and embedded in that language is a twofold central tenet. TSAS offers a high-quality education in a nurturing environment. Our end goal is to prepare students to flourish beyond graduation. TSAS has a longstanding liberal arts education philosophy. We offer personalized learning opportunities for every unique student. We are a certified Blue Ribbon School. TSAS is diverse by design. Our student body is meant to reflect the diversity of the city in which we live in, and we believe it is a great strength that our students come from every Tulsa zip code. Our teachers are professional experts in their respective content areas, and they take great pride in their chosen field. Our families know that their child will be cared for and known and challenged in TSAS classrooms. TSAS teachers and parents are public school advocates, and we believe we hold an important role in the public education landscape in Oklahoma. TSAS alumni have gone on to become leaders in Tulsa and across the country. I've met alumni who explained that TSAS helped them gain both a sense of personal agency and a sense of the broader community, and we're proud of the ways our alums are positively affecting the world around us, bridging those two ideals. So why do I stand before you tonight? Well, we're applying for a 6th grade addition to our school. Our phones have rung, our inboxes have filled up, and our conversations with families always broach this question, "Why don't you have a 6th grade?" The truth is that TSAS is making the request because our families and your families desperately want a TSAS 6th grade. TSAS is adamant that we serve the Tulsa community as partners in tandem and in alignment with Tulsa Public Schools. We believe that a 6th grade entry point will create a more complete experience for our students to fully immerse in the distinctive culture and academic design of our school. Just about done. This year, TSAS is working on stewardship. Students are helping our custodians keep the halls tidy. We have a student-led recycling program. Our ecology class has partnered with our cafeteria to work on composting that our biology class will use to work around in our little garden outside. I've been thinking a lot about what this word stewardship means. Webster defines it as "the careful and responsible management of something entrusted to one's care." Educators are stewards of our community, and I stand before you this evening to ensure that TSAS seeks to be good stewards of the partnership that we enjoy with Tulsa Public Schools and the students and families that we share.
If there are no further questions on that, we can go on to items, item G12, which is an expansion request for Tulsa Honor Academy. Tulsa Honor Academy is seeking an expansion starting in the 2020-2021 school year, I'm sorry, excuse me, the 2019-2020 school year, next year, to begin a 9th grade expansion that will include a full high school by the completion of their year-by-year grow-up. Each of these grades will be 125 students per grade, and it'll grow year by year over four years. The performance summary that you can find around Tulsa The performance summary that you can find around Tulsa Honor Academy summarizes their performance under our charter framework, and I, I will be brief in this by saying that their performance is, in many ways, quite extraordinary. Tulsa Honor Academy achieves nearly two years of growth for every year that they, that they are instructing students in ELA and in math. Two years of growth is a very high benchmark and one that shows the amount of rigor and time that they're bringing to their day-to-day instruction. They actually are running a longer school day, they are in school for about an hour and a half more per day than our neighborhood schools. Tulsa Honor Academy also has some outstanding OSTP results, and from it, in conjunction with the reality of the density of poverty that in the community that they serve, they show themselves on that measure as well to be producing excellent results for the students enrolled in their school. Their high school expansion focuses on a vision for a high school that their current eighth graders can matriculate into. This is their first group of eighth graders, and they'll become ninth graders under this expansion in Tulsa Honor Academy's high school. They, in this vision, all students will take four AP courses and have the opportunity to take calculus, among other regular graduation requirements, and a retroactive core. They bring forth this recommendation, I'm sorry, this request to you because they feel that they have something significant that they can contribute to the broader East Tulsa community, and the extension of their current program into a high school gives them a chance to do so. I'll turn it over to you for any questions.
I just want to quickly clarify, we're talking about item G13 because TSAS was item G11 and G12, so we're, I'm discussing item G13.
Thank you.
Any questions from board members before we have the speakers come forward? Okay, well, we'll start in with our speakers, and I see they're prepared. Ms. Wester.
A quick question, what is the entry point in the school, and will it remain to be that same entry point even if it's expanded?
Yeah, their current entry point is fifth grade, they're not seeking a change on their entry point, just to grow up into high school.
No other questions? We'll have Elsie Urreta Pollak, Alex Ann Laws, and Don Bush speaking as one, Ismael Ponce, and we'll, we'll stop there and let those few folks go, and then I'll call the rest.
Good evening. My name is Elsie Urreta Pollak, and I am the founder and executive director of Tulsa Honor Academy. My family moved to Tulsa from the El Paso, Juarez area when I was eight years old. I did not speak any English. My family made a lot of sacrifices to live in Tulsa. In fact, I moved 11 times before graduating high school. My mother, a single mother, raised my two older brothers and me to believe that education is the key to reaching the American dream. Through my mother's guidance and an excellent public education, my brothers and I all graduated high school with high honors, received full scholarships to the University of Oklahoma, and are highly successful adults. Unfortunately, many of my peers who looked like me and had similar backgrounds did not share my same story. Many did not get to go to college, and of those who attended, many did not finish. This was not because they weren't smart or capable enough, this was not because their families did not care about them. The key difference was that they did not receive the type of education that would prepare them for college success. Being the leader of Tulsa Honor Academy is more than just a job for me, it's my passion, but more so, it's, it's my life's purpose. And as such, I, along with the THA familia, have worked relentlessly hard to fulfill the promise we've made to our families, that we would provide the very best education that would prepare each and every one of our scholars to go to and graduate from college. Thus far, I believe we've lived up to, to our promise. On average, our scholars enter the fifth grade performing two or more grade levels behind. By the time they get to the seventh grade, they are, on average, performing at or above grade level. This means that we essentially close the achievement gap with our scholars in just two short years. Our scholars are so advanced in math that every one of them takes algebra in the eighth grade or earlier. In fact, our advanced scholars take algebra in the seventh grade and few as early as sixth grade. Our scholars have grown so much and have achieved at such high levels that Tulsa Honor Academy has received a number of recognitions. We were named the 2018 Oklahoma Charter School of the Year by Choice Matters. We are one of three schools across the nation to be a part of this year's Building Excellence Schools, Anchoring Excellence cohort, and we were also one of six schools across the country to be a part of this year's Charter School Growth Funds Emerging CMOs. In addition to our academic success, we have a strong community support, as you can see, and strong family engagement. Every year, we reach a 97% student attendance rate and a 96% student retention rate. Most of the scholars who do end up leaving THA do so because they move out of the district or out of the state and can no longer attend. At every parent-teacher conference, we reach between a 92% and a 98% family attendance rate. In the summer, we had over 200 volunteers help us build desks, hang bulletin boards, set up classrooms, and move into our new location. Together, their efforts totaled more than 1,000 man-hours. Further, we had two parent leaders who mobilized dozens of other parents and collected over 5,000 signatures of support for the THA high school in just 10 days. While I believe we are making progress towards fulfilling our promise, I worry that if we do not get to expand into the high school, we may fall short. For the past three and a half years, we have worked alongside TPS to be able to provide a college prep option for scholars in our community. Similarly, we want to perpetuate this collaboration with TPS so that we can continue to be a college prep option for East Tulsa. I love THA, and I love the THA familia. I know that it is a special place that offers a special type of education. I, on behalf of the THA familia, ask that you approve the expansion of the Tulsa Honor Academy High School on December 3rd. But instead of hearing this from me, it's important that you hear from our next speakers, THA staff, families, and scholars about what makes THA so special and why THA deserves a high school. Thank you.
I am Alex Ann Laws, but are known as Ms. Laws, a fifth-grade English-language arts teacher at Tulsa Honor Academy. About six months ago, I was on the verge of graduating with my master's degree from the University of Arkansas, and often found myself dreaming of what my ideal school would be comprised of. I yearned for classroom with eager scholars, I hoped for a teacher advisor, wished for a welcoming faculty, and needed a leadership team who would devotionally challenge me to continue learning as I entered the teaching profession. As I began sending my resume to schools near me, I considered relocating as an opportunity for self-growth and independence, but was unsure of where I wanted to be. Then I met Elsie and Kate, and immediately was intrigued by THA's student demographics, previous academic growth, and devotion for change within the Tulsa area. As I began the interviewing process, many of my peers and acquaintances were perplexed as to why I would enter Oklahoma education, as so many were departing this year. My answer was I desired to be included in the transformation of Oklahoma education. When Elsie and Kate explained more about the THA familia, the life-impacting experience scholars were getting, I knew I had to be a part of it. Scholars at THA are told every day in different manners and by different individuals CSIP where they meaning, yes, we can. In addition, faculty hear that every day as well. They get the same message, "We are supported through crucial and applicable professional development that expounds our knowledge of data, methods and practices, strategies, resources, and simple encouragement to enhance our practice within the classroom." I received a fine education in undergraduate and graduate school, although I would not be the teacher I am today without my continuous knowledge I am receiving at THA. Consequently, I ask you to think of my current colleagues. Right now, roughly 30 teachers are receiving extended education, thus better preparing us to adequately prepare our scholars for college and beyond. Think of how many additional teachers would be obtaining and implementing change when THA high school is approved. Double the amount of inspiring and rigorous instruction could be delivered, double the amount of scholars could be served, double the amount of change could be implemented in Tulsa, Oklahoma. Subsequently, I probed the board, think of the devoted teachers and staff who are ready to serve upper-school scholars, accept the approval of THA's high school so teachers like me are better preparing Tulsa students with attainment of higher education, rewarding collegiate achievement, and prosperous careers. Thank you.
My name is Don Bush. I'm a second-year teacher at THA. I'm very thankful for this opportunity to share with you three practices that I believe make THA stand out as a school of excellence. The first practice that makes THA stand out is the hiring process. I have been in education for over 16 years and worked with many different, many different levels of education. I have never been through a more rigorous hiring process. As I observe the teachers that I have been, that have been hired, it's obvious that this process works. All the teachers are high-achieving, self-motivated individuals with a variety of backgrounds that love kids and want to make a difference in the world through education. Next, after being hired at THA, we almost immediately start the training process. At THA, we start our year one month earlier than most other schools. Through a series of strategic summer professional development lessons, the teachers are taught the Teach Like a Champion techniques that have been compiled by research to be the best practices in the classroom. Part of my past teaching experience was as a professor for six years at Oklahoma Wesleyan University. During that time, I served on many residency committees to certify the first-year teachers in the state of Oklahoma. The training process that THA employs prepares our teachers to be excellent teachers from the start. I have my undergraduate and master's degree in education and have never heard of most of these techniques. During the school year, I normally would expect to be observed two or three times. However, at THA, the teachers are observed and coached afterward, weekly. This is a tremendous commitment to teacher preparation and training that I feel means and exceeds the normal practicum and student teaching experience that I went through. My teaching skills have sharpened, and many of my bad teaching habits have been refined through the training process. I wish I had started my teaching career with this training. The third and possibly strongest practice that THA employs to stand out as a school of excellence is that they hold very high standards for behavior for all scholars. From the very beginning, the parents and scholars are made aware of the high standards to accomplish this goal. To accomplish this goal, small details have to be focused on and disciplines practiced. I would highly recommend THA be granted the high school charter they are seeking.
Sorry, Mr. Bush. Thank you.
First and foremost, I would like to introduce myself. I am Ismael Ponce, an eighth-grade student at Tulsa Honor Academy. I have attended THA for the past four years, and it was a big adjustment in the beginning. As I have grown up at the school, I've come to realize many things. First, because THA is such a unique school, it completely differs from all others. We, as scholars, could really benefit from continuing with THA for the next four years at the Tulsa Honor Academy High School. Second, I've learned that the rules that THA will put in place to build character and set guidelines to help us make the best of our time. Even with our extended school day, there is only so much we can learn in one day. Thanks to all our efforts from teachers, families, and students alike, with a longer school year, we can learn so much more than at any other school. A third thing I've come to realize, not only is teaching an educational experience, it is also a great social experience. I've met some amazing people here at Tulsa Honor Academy. Here, I met two of my best friends, and I've also had the good fortune to discover two of my passions. I had the opportunity to run across-country races, as well as playing soccer, and plan to continue, continue doing so in the upcoming years. The final thing, which I know will not be the last, is that all the staff and families at THA dedicate their time to helping us. Our teachers could have gone into professions that pay more for much less time. However, they decided to, to help us prepare for our future careers. Because of my teachers' and family's support, I am pushing myself to go to Massachusetts Institute of Technology and major in robotics engineering. After high school, during my year of sixth grade, I took an engineering course and currently, currently taking geometry as an advanced course in addition to STEM as a general course. This has broadened my desire to pursue my dreams of helping others through robotics as an adult. Of course, as much as the THA staff dedicates their time to helping us, they also need time for themselves. They seem to spend every waking, every waking second doing something to help us, and even offer scholars to call them until nine in the evenings if we ever have any questions about school work. The fact that they spend so much time and effort to help us is incredible. I cannot say enough good things about Tulsa Honor Academy. As I said before, coming to THA was a big adjustment, and we also have to admit that coming to THA has been really helpful. I've gained so much knowledge in such a short time, and I believe that without the high school, what we have worked to achieve would have been for nothing. We have worked so hard to get this point that if, that all would have, all would come undone if we quit now. There might be people out there that think that we do not deserve the high school, yet we have worked too hard for too long and have gone through too many obstacles to not try anything and everything at our disposal to reach our goals. In the end, I have spoken on behalf of my peers, whose voice cannot be heard today. This decision lies with you, the TPS school board, to decide if we get the high school or not. My hopes is that you decide to approve a high school so that we can continue receiving the education that everyone deserves. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Next, next we have Amparo Martinez and Lena Albidres. And after that is Nicholas Ludolph and Samantha Aponte.
Good afternoon. My name is Amparo Martinez. I am a THA proud parent. Tulsa Honor Academy provides a high-quality education in a friendly and professional environment. It focuses on preparing our kids to go to college and teaching them high standards to help them be successful in life. The THA students knows the importance of discipline and respect. THA is a place where you always feel is welcome. The staff is fully bilingual, they make sure you, the parents have all the information necessary to support the students, they care about communication. My daughters start fifth grade when they opened the school, and as a parent, I can tell you that they have, I've seen all the effort they have done to improve every day. They always listen to parent concerns, they make sure to have translators at the parent teacher conferences, so there is no language barrier. That way, we can all work together for our students' well-being. THA has exceptional teachers, they encourage our kids to do their best and meet their goals every day, as well as develop their character and personalities. They are giving them the best academic skills they need to succeed. I have seen a huge growth in my daughter's education. I have an oldest daughter that is in high school, and sometimes my THA student, she's on eighth grade, she's been able to help her doing her homework, or they just talk about what they're learning at school, and most of the times, they're learning the same thing, especially on math. And that makes me, for that, I know that this, the school is very advanced, and that's the, the kind of education our kids deserve. THA is making a big difference in our kids' education and in our society. THA is not an institution, THA is a family, is familia. I absolutely recommend the, the school to anyone. With a THA high school, we are giving our kids the opportunity to have a better life and a better future. Thank you.
My name is Lena Martinez. I'm here to support, I'm sorry. This is making me so emotional, sorry. I'm here to support Tulsa Honor Academy. I wanted Tulsa Honor Academy high school because THA have exceptional teachers who works as one team with one only mission on their minds, to prepare our kids to be works as one team with one only mission on their minds, to prepare our kids to be, sorry, to prepare our kids with the academic skills, contact knowledge, and ethic characters required from college graduation. As a parent, I see this could be possible. My son has ADHD. As you might know, he has a lot of trouble taking, follow directions, being focused on class, finish his homework. It's so hard. It's very difficult. THA, it's helping us to keep him on class all the time. They avoid the suspension so he can keep learning at school. Teacher, his math teacher, it's been taking some time after school so he can help him with any other struggles that he might have or he needs help with other, with homework especially because it's so hard for him doing homework. THA teachers, they're amazing. They make us be part of their family. We are just family, not just only volunteers at school. After, sorry. Well, my daughter started on fifth grade with a low academic Ds and Cs, almost Fs. And before she finished her first grade, her first school year at THA, she was so proud and she was so happy because her progress report show is As and Bs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Whenever you start, they're gonna start the timer, okay? Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Nicholas Ludolf and I'm an seventh grade student at Tulsa Honor Academy. When I began THA two and a half years ago, I was on an individual education plan and was reading at a third grade level. Every morning, I go to school and am taught by teachers who really want to see me succeed or go to college, sorry, and I want to go to college. Ever since starting THA, I have set my eyes on intending MIT. I look forward to test because I get to see how far I have come. I am now reading above a ninth grade level and I'm at a twelfth grade level in math. I have come so far because of hard work, dedicated teachers, and THA's academic program. That strong program will carry over to a high school and give students like me the ability to advance even further. My IEP goal in reading this year is to reach a ninth grade level. I know THA has given me the tools to accomplish this goal and I will achieve it. THA's program is one of a kind in Tulsa. The teachers really do care about me, want to see me succeed, and I want to succeed. A Tulsa Honor Academy high school will help me get there. If in just over two years, THA's program can help me raise my reading level by six years, imagine what I could do if given the opportunity to complete high school through THA. Maybe MIT isn't so far fetched. Imagine how much this school can help our community. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you, Mrs. Yu, for starting our school. I hope I get the chance to fight all of you to my graduation from Tulsa Honor Academy High School.
That is certainly a tough act to follow, but I will do my best. Good evening y buenas noches, the team board and THA familia. My name is Samantha Aponte and I have the distinct honor of being the fifth grade ELA teacher at Tulsa Honor Academy. Over a year and a half ago, I moved to Tulsa and when I went to speak to my mentor about where I should teach, she said, "What's your dream school sound like?" I sat back and thought, "I'm gonna really stump her with this one." I told her I wanted to find a school with a love of literacy, strong systems, a school that affirmed and uplifted kids of color, specifically those that looked like me, a school with a sense of community and strong values. She looked at me and said, "I know just the place." I come from a community where a school like ours doesn't exist, so I was surprised to hear that. You see, you don't just imagine a school like ours and you can't just hear about it to understand it. It's more of something you feel. When I think of our school, I think selfishly of the twenty-five-year-old bilingual educator who grows each and every day from the sixty beautiful souls I get to teach, but also from the leadership and my coworkers who push me endlessly to be my best self. I also think of the ten-year-old version of myself who I see in each of my kids who would have done just about anything for a school like ours. I come from a place where statistics told me that I couldn't and I shouldn't and I wouldn't and I now get the honor to teach at a school that tells my scholars that they will and they can. I could stand before you and talk to you until Thanksgiving dinner is served and tell you all about what it means to be a THA Knight, but again, it's something you feel. I didn't truly understand what joy was until I saw April's face as she beat her end of year reading goal for the third time last school year and was still shocked. I can't tell you what team and creativity and true hunger for learning looks like until you see Jared write, publish, and disperse his own comic book to peers and teachers at our school. And I can't tell you what it means to be a nerdy Knight until you see Montserrat try to find one more day in the school year to fit her fiftieth book report for that school year. It's just something you feel and I could talk to you endlessly about it. You see, I could continue to talk to you about it, but the statistics for kids who look like me already paint a very vivid picture. And we could track and wait for improvement and reconvene next year and talk about the possibility of a high school, but the time for our kids to be the change that our world so desperately needs is now. As of 2016, among Latinx students ages twenty-five to twenty-nine, just fifteen percent of us have a bachelor's degree or higher degree compared to forty-one percent of our white peers. Additionally, Black and Latinx students are more underrepresented in our nation's top colleges and universities than they were thirty-five years ago. I don't know about you, but I can't wait for another generation to pass and watch those numbers deplete. As a teacher, we tell our scholars that college is attainable, but how are we preparing them with less than twenty-one percent of the population at Brown and Cornell in Columbia being students of color? Hay un dicho que dice, hay poder en aprender, which means that there is power in learning. At THA, our scholars learn not just the things that they need to succeed academically, but personally, professionally, and interpersonally as well. THA's mission is not to get students to college, but through college. We are not planning on just leaving them at the doorstep. We teach them the social, academic, and professional skills they need to be the best they can be. For the past four years, East Tulsa has supported our scholars in every capacity, from every event, every progress report, every parent teacher conference, and so on, and it is our time now to show credit and support them as well. By that I mean showing courage, respect, enthusiasm, determination, integrity, and team, the things we preach to our scholars day in and day out. So on behalf of my kids, past, present, and future, I ask you and I thank you to consider this opportunity for my kids.
Our last speaker on this item is Veronese Garcia.
Good evening. My name is Veronese Garcia and I'm an eighth grade scholar at Tulsa Honor Academy. I'm here today to explain why I believe THA needs a high school. Many families are thrilled about the expansion, including my own. In fact, I have two siblings who also attend THA. All three of us have our separate goals, while all of us are saying, "I'm going to college and to the THA High School first." Each day, everyone, myself, my friends, our parents, my teachers, the whole THA familia, is working hard to accomplish what needs to be done, to prepare us for college, and the THA High School would be the next step to get us there. THA is a very unique school that focuses on building character and educating scholars on what they need to know. Expanding to a high school is an exciting idea as many scholars are at their final year at the middle school and want to continue being part of the THA familia. The high school will benefit many students who want the extra push to be on the path to college. Many scholars give a hundred percent effort every single day in class and that effort pays off. In and out of school, we always show our credit values. Credit are the core values that every scholar represents through their actions and their words. C stands for courage, which I have a lot of to be able to speak in front of all of you today. R stands for respect, as I hold towards everyone present. E stands for enthusiasm, as this is very exciting. D is for determination, as we continue striving until the final decision is made. I is for integrity, as we are all very honest with our words. T is for team, and as you can see, we have a strong team evident by the THA familia who is together here to support the high school expansion. Before coming to THA, I struggled so much with math, reading, and writing. Now that I've studied here for four years, my skills have vastly improved. I'm currently reading at a twelfth grade level with Alexa of twelve sixty-eight and came to THA at a fourth grade reading level. That means I grew eight reading levels in less than four years. I also took engineering in sixth grade and I'm also taking it in eighth. One of the most interesting facts is that I took algebra in the seventh grade and am currently in the eighth grade geometry class. Being in THA has really helped me improve on the skills that were very crucial for any career I chose and I see now it is also helping my two younger siblings. The decision you make on December third will influence the future generations of THA Knights. If you vote yes, you will help us continue to grow on a path to become great leaders. As we have learned in history, many great leaders are the ones we least expect. Not everyone expects us kids from East Tulsa to graduate from college, but we will prove them wrong. We will prove them wrong. We are going to graduate. The THA High School will help us bring this into reality. With the high school, we will create the leaders of tomorrow as everyone wants to have our better future and THA has been a leading force. Our main goal is ten, 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 which states that a hundred percent of our scholars go to and graduate from college. The high school will help us complete our goals and make it so that every generation of nerdy Knights gets to go to college.
Any questions from board members on G-13? We'll move to G-14.
One additional point I do want to offer on G-13, as you might have been able to see from the speakers, THA has got a very specific focus on a twelve-square-mile area in East Tulsa. We do not have a high school facility for them and so they're gonna be closing in on the final details around securing a facility that will accommodate their high school. As was the case when we discussed KIP, will be impending to the motion, expectations around the adequacy of that facility from a safety perspective and accreditation perspective and from the perspective of educational adequacy.
Thank you for that reminder. All of our charter partners currently are in Tulsa Public School facilities. Is that correct?
With the exception of KIP, which is currently housed at OSU.
A portion of KIP.
Yeah, a portion.
So G-14.
Yep. G-14 is a recommendation for an expansion for Collegiate Hall Charter School. This is an expansion that would go into effect for the 2020-2021 school year, so not next year, but the year after that. This is an expansion request for a PK-three expansion, which would make Collegiate Hall's full grade span PK through eight. Collegiate Hall is, you can see from their performance summary, providing also an outstanding academic program for their students. They have extremely impressive MAP growth and are routinely delivering one and a half or more years' worth of learning in each year that they teach. They also have had extraordinary growth. Students enter in the fifth grade often at a ten or fifteenth percentile and are routinely leaving or closing seventh grade out at Collegiate Hall in excess of seventy or eighty percentile ranking on the MAP. These academic accomplishments are significant and they are also partially the result of extended day and over thirty days of professional development per year in the school. Collegiate Hall is also unique in the sense that they have a very deep connection to and partnership with the Memorial High School feeder pattern. In fact, one of their primary goals is to deliver students who are well-prepared in STEM fields and to strengthen the STEM strand within Memorial High School. The rationale for their expansion hinges on their continued desire to provide an excellent option for students living in the Peoria and Sixty-First area and to continue to strengthen the broader Memorial High School boundary areas. I open it up to you guys for questions and speakers.
Any questions before we invite the speakers to come forward? So we'll begin with Ms. Sarah Jane Gillette, followed by Popsy Floyd, Exan Black, and Lane Matheson. And I'll stop there and then I'll call the next round of speakers. So just a reminder, when your microphone starts flashing, it's about to go off. And your time is concluded.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Gist and members of the board, my name is Sarah Jane Gillette. I've served as a part of the Collegiate Hall Board since February of 2015, six months before the school opened its doors, and I'm the current board president. Would it be possible for the families that have been patiently waiting in that room to walk in and join us, Madam President?
Please do.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in support of Collegiate Hall Charter School's expansion request. This expansion of our school, which would allow us to serve pre-K through eighth graders, has been a subject of discussion with our school leader Nikhil Colra and our board members for some time. The request is the culmination of thoughtful preparation and discussion about our resources and how Collegiate Hall can best serve kids as a strong partner of Tulsa Public Schools. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to hear from community supporters, community partners, parents, and kids in support of this request. The mission of Collegiate Hall is to prepare students with the academic foundation and moral compass for lifelong success. And to date, we've worked hard to accomplish our mission. The students that started with us on average in the bottom quartile are now scoring in the top quartile. The board is incredibly proud of this academic result. It's the good work of our teachers and staff, the hard work of our students, that are reflected in the reading, math, and science growth of our students. We are also proud to be a member of the Sixty-First and Peoria community. Tonight, you'll have the chance to hear from a former Tulsa Police Resource Officer who will talk about the role the school plays within our community. We are a coding school within TPS and Exan Black with the Tulsa Regional STEM Alliance is here tonight to talk about the need now for a strong STEM elementary school in TPS. We think that by focusing our expansion on dedicated STEM classes for pre-K through eighth grade, we will foster a fascination and curiosity with science, technology, engineering, and mathematics that persuades more kids to study these subjects in high school in preparation for continuing their education in college. Our workforce needs in Tulsa demand more dedicated high school and college graduates prepared to work in these disciplines and we believe that Collegiate Hall can be part of that solution. I also want to applaud the parents and the kids who will speak tonight on behalf of the school. You will hear firsthand their invaluable insight into the school and what the school has meant to them. And finally, I offer the perspective and full support of the Collegiate Hall Governing Board. We are a strong and high-functioning board with twelve dedicated and well-qualified independent directors. We have experienced success in developing community partnerships, including our most important and highly valued partnership with the Tulsa Public School District, and we are mission-driven with a laser-like focus on our students and our families that we serve. We are a board- We are a board that speaks with one voice, and we are here this evening to urge the Tulsa Public School Board to respond favorably to our application and allow Collegiate Hall Charter School to serve more children. Thank you.
How y'all doing? My name is Popsy Floyd. For the last eight years, I went by Officer Popsy Floyd, but it won't take up too much time. I'm probably the only one that doesn't have anything rolled out, but it's because when Ms. Nikhil called me and asked could I come speak, I almost was in tears because this community of 61st and Peoria, man, those kids are amazing. When you think of 61st and Peoria, most of the time, you think of crime, poverty, you think of all these negative things. Two years ago, Tulsa Police Department received a grant for that area. They received that grant because of all those statistics, high poverty, the most dense area in the city of Tulsa, 42 apartment complexes in a two-mile radius. I talked to parents when I first took that role, and they would tell me they would get dropped off two miles down at 51st and Peoria, or they would go just a couple miles south because they were afraid to see their, for their coworkers to see where they lived. I would have students who were excited about the area, but they were embarrassed to say they went to Marshall or Wright Elementary just because people would associate them with maybe a shooting that happened the past week. But something happened when this school came to the area. I worked with kids, and I would go to their houses, and one thing that I found out is that a lot of the kids that we were having problems with at home, when I would go to school the next day to kind of see maybe it's the problems at school, the teachers would be having the same problem. And so, we started having meetings and talking to community members and asking, what can we do? How can we create change? And how can we give these, these kids something to be proud of? And the whole time, the change was already here in the community with Collegiate Hall. I've seen kids go from the very same school that Collegiate Hall is inside of. I've seen those same kids who were doing, which some would say bad in school, who were coming home with negative reports. I've seen them switch to Collegiate Hall, and they would run up to me in the community like they just won a Lotto. You would think they just got accepted into Harvard or Yale. That's how proud they are to say they go to Collegiate Hall. Collegiate Hall has given this community something to be proud of. It gives the community something to brag about. As a police officer, I spend a lot of my time talking to adults, trying to go back and fix, maybe they made a mistake, and now they got something on their record, and it was hard for them to get a job. And so, I would spend a large majority of my time just trying to go back and, you know, whether it was me signing as a reference for them, getting to know them. I'll be your reference, but I gotta get to know you. So, what we found out is if we invest in the children, you don't have to go back and spend so much time working with an adult. And that's what Collegiate Hall is doing. If you go into that school, if you just go visit, go visit the community, drive through the area, you can see the difference that that, that community, that school has for the community. When we have community meetings, we didn't have to ask teachers to show up. Collegiate Hall was there, the principal was there, volunteers were there. That means a lot to those kids when they see the teachers show up. And so, now they have the opportunity to start at a younger age, and that is super big. It's really important for that community, because a lot of those parents are just trying to get by until they get to the 4th grade now. But those kids desire and they seek structure, and that's what Collegiate Hall gives for them. It is the structure that community needs, and it's something that I can tell you that it made my job as a police officer easy, when I could just go visit that school and not have to worry about kids running down the hall. I would drive, walk down that school, and walk down the hallways, and I would forget, forget Collegiate Hall was, was even in the, in the building. And so, I'm just honored to be able to come speak on their behalf. I know there's probably hundreds of kids who would just give everything if they had transportation to get here and just show you how much Collegiate Hall has done for them. So, I hope you let them have what they need. Thank you.
Good evening, President Schreiber, Dr. Gist, and Honored Board. I'm Exan Black. I'm the Executive Director of Tulsa Regional STEM Alliance. The STEM Alliance is four years old. We represent 150 different STEM stakeholders, and this summer, we got our 501(c)(3), so that's exciting for us. I just want to thank you first of all for allowing us to be a partner of Tulsa Public Schools. We have worked with you on the Smithsonian National Air and Space Museum Explainers Program, Posh-Pet Palace Project, Math Mentors STEM Funders Network, the Drone Fly-In, Your Kind of a Big Deal Banquet, STEM Cubed, and Sensational Science Professional Development, STEM Shop, and Engineer Games, and that's all in the past month. So, we've been busy. Our vision is all-students-STEM-ready. We, we see a Tulsa in which there's a robust and diverse STEM workforce, driving a more globally competitive northeastern Oklahoma. I think you're aware of what STEM is, but just in case, science is that wonder-driven question that every four-year-old has. Technology is all the tools we developed from the first flint knife to the space station. Engineering, my personal favorite, takes the big ideas of science and puts it together with the best tools that technology gives us to solve real-world problems. Math is the wonderful, universal language that all the rest speak. Without math, there would be no STEM. And I want to just say a few words tonight about why STEM can't wait. STEM can't wait because it holds too much hope for the kids that we serve together. STEM fuels innovation. We are now at the dawn of an innovation economy. STEM is the fabric of innovation. When we want to make something new, we're going to reach for science and technology and engineering and math, and sometimes the best-of-all possible versions of polyester, where they're so blended together that you can't really tell what they are, but we know that we need that great stretchy fabric of STEM. STEM is the engaging crossroads of science, engineering, technology, and mathematics that calls our students to wonder, to create, to imagine, and design. Why, why the innovation economy? The innovation economy is impacting professions and skills needed to pursue them. In the medical field, we can make more accurate diagnoses with precise machines. In the legal field, we have online platforms that are allowing attorneys to do niche work. How does this work affect the Oklahoma workforce? All of our top industries are 100% dependent on a STEM workforce, from energy to health to IT to agriculture to aerospace. They all look at us and ask to give them the workforce that we need. In 2016, at Governor Fallon's STEM Summit, Lieutenant General Levy from Tinker Air Force Base stood up and said that Tinker can hire every single STEM graduate that the state of Oklahoma produces alone. So, that kind of put us all on edge to know that we need to get busy and get started. Why, why create a STEM elementary and why Collegiate Hall? Collegiate Hall, as you know, has a strong record, both in terms of the STEM work that they're doing and as far as their academic progress. They are doing work that is thought-provoking, intentional, and scaffolded. In closing, let's see, one more second, one more page, sorry. In closing, the future for Tulsa students is bright. Skilled in innovation, creative thinking, critical thinking, communication, persistence, and collaboration, our pupils will embark on a journey of choosing the types of problems that they will engage for a vocation and beyond. TRSA is profoundly grateful for your strong consideration of creating a TPS STEM elementary school through Collegiate Hall. Thank you.
I'm Lane Matheson, a teacher and the Director of the Engineering Academy at Memorial High School. I first met Principal Colra shortly before he opened Collegiate Hall, and at the time, I cannot tell you how thrilled and excited I was to hear that someone wanted to prepare students to feed into this program we had built at Memorial, because I can tell you, even though we opened in 2005, here we are, I still run into people who live in our district who don't know we exist. So, when he had that, he revealed his plan, I was over the moon. And since then, I can tell you, he has taught to me many, many times about how he can better prepare his students to enter the Engineering Academy at Memorial and be fully prepared, fully engaged, and make the most of the opportunity. He truly cares that his students have the background and preparation to pursue the rigors of a STEM-focused education. And I want to tag onto what Exan said. I was told by the chamber that just here in Tulsa, they could place 3,000 engineers a month and still not fill all of the jobs that are available for STEM-educated workers. When I visited Collegiate Hall, I was impressed by the focus on improving students' STEM knowledge, and particularly the early emphasis on programming skills. Too many students in high school who started out with an interest in STEM end up either dropping or avoiding classes like physics, calculus, and computer programming, not because they're not capable, but because they are not comfortable with the struggles and the challenges they will face in those courses. Collegiate Hall appears to be removing this intimidation barrier. Starting students at an even younger age on the track to being comfortable with tackling these challenging subject matter seems to me to be a very good plan. Memorial is looking forward to receiving applications later this year from the 8th grade class from Collegiate Hall. I will be providing Principal Colra with feedback in upcoming years about how his students are doing at Memorial, as well as any areas in their preparation for high school that maybe could use improvement. And in closing, I want to thank Principal Colra for his vision in creating Collegiate Hall and to the school, Tulsa School Board for supporting this charter school.
You have Chris Miata, Sarah Stansel, Javier Anubia Zermono next.
My name is Chris Miata, and my daughter, Asha, is a student in 8th grade at Collegiate Hall. As a parent who's had their child's life so positively impacted by her school, I appreciate being given the opportunity to share my family's experiences. Asha previously had attended Marshall Elementary and joined Collegiate Hall during Collegiate Hall's first year. She has been blessed to have had the opportunity to attend what is now her final year with Collegiate. We recognized that she was having difficulty getting engaged with their studies, and we, and we knew that we had to help her change up how she was approaching school. During that time, we heard about Collegiate Hall and heard about their approaches, not only to classroom teaching, but their commitment to support students with additional educational tools, as well as commitment to creating a structured, safe, and conducive environment for students to learn in. To say that I never would have expected such a dramatic change in my daughter's school experience would be an understatement. Over the years that she was there, she's gone from being a student who barely got passing grades, placed at the bottom of standardized tests, to being an A and B student who has shown great strides in her standardized scores. Well, academic marks indeed are something that we are all proud of. It's her passion for learning that she has, and what we, as her parents, are most proud of. She has a thirst for knowledge, even outside of the classroom, that we think will help empower her through her life. The environment at Collegiate has the type of structure that kids her age need. Kids are taught to respect one another, to respect the staff, and most importantly, to respect themselves. I believe Collegiate Hall should have the opportunity to expand and help even more kids. Collegiate Hall, at least to the eyes of this parent, is built with purpose in mind. It's built on well-run processes, and is driven by teachers and staff whose passion is unparalleled. Because of Collegiate, my daughter's had a chance to engage in programs that have had a huge boost to her education. She's had a chance to learn coding, robotics, and engineering, not just in books, but in real-world examples. Seeing her eyes light up and how excited she got when she had a chance to build application logic to make an animation, when she had a chance to help program a robot for a competition, and when she had a chance to build a floating raft were, were true gifts as a parent. It's my hope that even more children in Tulsa get a chance to engage in these experiences. The level of empowerment that comes from the educational systems and teaching staff at Collegiate have been life-changing for my daughter. It's my hope that Collegiate continues to grow and impact more children's lives, and that someday, my two-year-old son will be able to follow in his big sister's footsteps. Thank you all for letting me share my story.
Hi, my name is Sarah Stansel Perez. I have a student, Emma Stansel, who's in the 7th grade at Collegiate Hall. I want to start by saying thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on their behalf. My child attended Dual Language Academy from pre-K to 2nd grade, and then did 3rd grade online, but she started Collegiate Hall for 4th grade, and she's been there for three years. I'm had, I'm here to tell you how proud I am of my child and her school, and why I think Collegiate Hall should have the opportunity to expand. My daughter is blessed with the ability to learn things very, very quickly. When she was in 1st grade, she had an excellent teacher, and she taught her how to do long division with remainders, which totally blew me away. The next two years was quite a struggle, just because I think she wasn't being challenged. And she had got to the point where she didn't like school. She would ask me, "How many more years do I have to go to school, Mom?" That all changed when she started at Collegiate Hall. At Collegiate Hall, my daughter loves to read, and so I think that was her favorite thing for the longest time, was anytime there's any kind of break, they're supposed to have that book in their hand, and they're supposed to be reading. And so, for her, that just makes it the perfect school. There's been a lot of talk about the STEM and science focus, and last year, when she was in 6th grade, that was her favorite class, was computer science. She went to a coding camp this summer that was sponsored by a couple of people in the community. I can't remember, sorry. But she had a blast at that camp. So, I've seen her really get excited about the things she does. She has this very uncanny ability to take whatever assignment there is in school and turn it into something to do with animals. And that's the kind of things that they're allowed to do, and they're encouraged to do at Collegiate Hall, to take their passions and what they're really interested in, and to apply it to what they're studying. And I'm kind of getting off-track here, but they, they have opportunities both during school and after-school for things like math clubs, the robotics clubs. Right now, she's doing a language club that she really, really loves, and then the community activities as well. The main thing that Collegiate Hall has done for her, I think, is just to be able to push her ahead. Her first year at Collegiate Hall, she started halfway through the year going up a grade for math, and she, you could just see her blooming. We went ahead after thinking very hard about it, and she skipped 5th grade, and there was some concern that her MAP scores would decline and stuff like that. But she did amazing. It was just like you, you gave her the extra instruction, you gave her the, not a push, it's not really a push, it's just an opportunity is really more what it is. And I think both her reading and math, her final reading and math, math, MAP scores last spring were several points higher than what her, I'm going to miss the words, growth goal was. And she met it as well in science. So, she did astounding for having skipped a grade. I think they were all above the 95th percentile still, and it's just great to have a school there that will take where your child is at and give them the skills to take it as far as they can. So, really, they're, they're focused on what each child needs, and teaching them the self-control and perseverance, I think that's going to affect these kids for the rest of their lives. And it should be offered as early as possible, in my opinion. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Javier Zermono. I am, I am a student, I am a student who attended at 6th grade at Collegiate Hall. I want to start by thanking, thanking, thanking you all for the opportunity to talk on my behalf, on behalf of my schools, on behalf of my school. At an early age, I went to Skelly Elementary before transferring to Collegiate Hall. I have been, I have been there for the last three years. I am, I'm proud of myself, I'm proud of Collegiate Hall, and I think that they should be able to be given the opportunity to expand. My parents enrolled me here, my parents enrolled me here because they, enrolled me, my parents enrolled me because they, they felt the education I was receiving was not adequate. They wanted me to attend to a school that would challenge me. When they, when they attended Collegiate Hall, my parents, my, when they attended Collegiate Hall, parents' orientation, they were impressed with the numbers they found. The pride of the school had their students accomplish made them realize that they were making the best were making the best choice for me and other students. I love Collegiate Hall because of the STEM program it offers. The smaller class sizes allow the teachers to focus on the students individually. They can tell if one of us is struggling, and they can offer us individualized help before we start falling behind. If we were offered this curriculum at a younger age, we would be able to not be, we would not be trying to catch up or having a hard time, or having a hard time. The dedication of the teachers show for us is simply amazing. Collegiate Hall has made a difference, both academically and socially, for me. My parents are accomplished, my parents are proud of my accomplishments. I'm beyond thankful for the teachers at Collegiate Hall and their... I'm beyond thankful for all the teachers at Collegiate Hall. I believe Collegiate...
You got it. You got it.
I believe Collegiate Hall should be given the opportunity to expand and serve more I hope you will vote yes and support our... And not only support the school, but us on this. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
I'm just going to say, if I had to go speak to some sixth graders, Javier, I don't think I could do as good a job as you did.
My name's Anastasia, and my daughter Isabella is in the eighth grade at Collegiate Hall. I want to start by saying thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on her behalf and their behalf. Before Collegiate Hall, Isabella went to Robertson, and she has now been at Collegiate Hall since the founding class of fifth graders. She will be the first graduating eighth graders. I'm here to tell you how proud I am of my child, the school, and why I think Collegiate Hall should be given the opportunity to expand. I chose to put Isabella at Collegiate Hall because she was struggling a lot in school. She was making passing grades but lacked all confidence in school and herself. Every morning was the battle of, "Why do I have to go to school? I think I know everything I need to know." I don't like it there. Every night was countless hours of homework that she said she had no clue what she was doing. Honestly, probably should have taken 30 minutes. She hated school so much and was convinced that she would never succeed at it. I love the fact that Collegiate Hall's teachers are honestly there to put the kids first. They're available outside of normal school hours for those children. The kids can contact their teachers just about any time of the day for help, reasonable hours, of course. Isabella is an extremely high-functioning autistic scale, so the structure at Collegiate Hall has benefited her greatly. She knows what she's doing on a daily basis down to the minute. Because of the program at Collegiate Hall is offering, Isabella now has confidence in herself and her schoolwork. She wants to go to school every day. Don't let her be sick, because she says, she'll tell you that she's not, to try to go to school. She has now decided she even wants to go eight more years to be a lawyer, once she's done. And since she's no longer just passing and has nearly straight A's, I believe that she can achieve this. But most importantly, Collegiate Hall has showed her that she can believe in this. They want the children to excel, and they work with them to excel. I can tell you that since she started, the emphasis on how high their bar for basically what the children are learning, I have a child, my next child, older than her, is two years older than Isabella, and in AP classes, and they routinely did the same homework with a two-year age gap with AP courses. They actually both took algebra one last year. So I had a seventh grader and a ninth grader taking the same class. And I just believe that Collegiate Hall should be given the opportunity to expand and serve more students, because every student deserves to have the support that the Collegiate Hall staff provide those students. I hope you will vote yes for their request. Thank you again for listening to us.
Nikhil Colra, our final speaker this evening.
That's me. I want to thank you again for giving us the opportunity to not only speak to you tonight, but to present our expansion request in full detail. We're really honored to be able to speak in front of you today and to present that, and not only that, but our parents and our families and our community's support. When we started this dream four years ago, we did so with a promise and a commitment. We did so with a promise to our families that we would provide a structured, rigorous, and college-preparatory school. We did so with a commitment to Tulsa Public Schools, that we would embed ourselves within the community, work hand-in-hand with community leaders, and perhaps most importantly, with TPS, to help all students be successful. To date, we've worked relentlessly to fulfill that promise. You've heard from Collegiate Hall families that are so proud of their students, the math growth. We've averaged almost two years of growth per school year, which has put us in the top 1% of schools nationwide in math, reading, and science. They spoke of the coding and the engineering. Our founding eighth-grade class now knows two languages, both JavaScript and Python. And finally, what they represented was the parent satisfaction. On our most recent parent survey, 94% of parents said they were satisfied or extremely satisfied with the offerings we provided. The second, and perhaps equally important, part was our commitment to our community. You heard from our community leader, Popsy Floyd, who spoke of the pride he had in our school. You heard from Exan, who spoke with conviction about the STEM programming. And most importantly, you heard from Lane Matheson, who spoke to the honest partnership that we would like to have with the district. Because the truth is that when charters and districts work together, all students can succeed. We know you have an important decision to make in two weeks. We know how badly our staff, our students, our families, and our community want an exceptional education. We are eager to work with you to provide that, and hope that you'll vote yes on December 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on these charter expansion items this evening? Dr. Decker.
Thank you, President Schreiber. I really enjoyed all of the remarks tonight, so much positivity and spirit for the schools. It was really emotional for, I think, many of us actually listening to all of that. Just as a board member, it's important that I do my due diligence to fully understand both sides of a possible story. And so I received some data tonight showing some very positive stories. But I do know that some national criticism of charters, and specifically, this is not in Oklahoma, so I'm just talking about what I've read online, per se. So I just want to bring that up as my own due diligence, which is about how sometimes charters have been found to be expelling a lot of students, or there's a lot of churn because maybe some students aren't behaving as desired, and the schools may be having trouble getting the behaviors that they wanted. And so I don't know if it's possible to have data tonight, but I would just like, at some point over the next few weeks, to receive some information on expulsion from these schools and retention of students. And Elsie did mention retention. I want more retention data. Thank you.
It's an important point, and these schools are actually representative of our high-quality sector in achieving pretty extraordinary levels of year-over-year re-enrollment. So Tulsa Honors got a 96% year-over-year retention rate. Collegiate Hall's got a 90%, and TSAS is right around 86. For each of these schools, they do research into why families leave. The vast majority of the students who are not returning inside each of those rates is because they are actually, in some form or another, moving out of the area. Relative to expulsions, the charter schools have a responsibility to provide the kind of support students need within a system of safe and fair and legal progressive intervention and discipline, and expulsion is actually not an option for our charter schools.
Any other questions? Thank you to all of our speakers this evening, and like I said, Javier, you did a really, really good job, and I want to get the breathing down like you do when I have to speak. You did it. Thank you, Ms. Castaneda, and I would like to join our board president and Ms. Castaneda and others in thanking all of the educators and families and students who came out tonight to talk about teaching and learning, and talk about schools, and be with us here tonight to share your stories. We really are very grateful that you took the time to do that, so thank you again. Item G15 is a routine recommendation for sanctioning of booster clubs and parent-teacher associations in accordance with board policy. This item appears on agendas during the school year as the organizations complete the requirements, so sort of rolling, and they need to have their sanctioned status. So our chief financial officer, Noberto Del Godillo, is here to answer any questions, if you have any, about these items, this item. Okay, items G16 through G22 will be presented by our executive director of bond projects, Mr. Chris Hudgens. Mr. Hudgens.
Thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber, and board members. Items G16 and 17 is to enter into a contract with the low voltage for enhanced secure entries, and item G17 is to assign those. Those projects are currently out at bidding, and they'll be brought back to the next board meeting. Items G18, 19, and 20 all deal with the entering into contract with our lowest responsible bidder for the EduCare4. As we mentioned, this project will not exceed $6 million, and the other portion of this project will be encumbered with the EduCare4 funding through their funds, and this will also be brought back in the next board meeting with the contracts. It's in the bidding phase. And items G21 and G22 deal with the lowest responsible bidder for tornado-resistant coiling doors for MacArthur and Grissom Elementary. It's in the bidding phase and will be brought back, and it's to award and assign the contracts. Are there any questions on any of those items? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudgens. Items G23 through G24 will be presented by our chief operations officer, Mr. Jorge Robles. Mr. Robles.
Thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber, members of the board. Even though it's only November 2018, we're going to talk about calendar for 2019, 20. So items G23 and G24 have to do with the calendar for 2019, 2020. Item G23 specifically requires that you approve the use of the hours to calculate our calendar as provided by House Bill 1864. We can do it by days or hours, and we're recommending that we calculate it by hours since it gives us more flexibility to maintain our daily attendance in the event that we were to need that flexibility. And item G24 is to approve the proposed calendar that was developed by the calendar committee for the school year 1920. The calendar committee has been hard at work since July. It includes the feedback of teachers, principals, ILDs, and several departments within the district office. And they did some amazing work, actually incorporating some insights from attendance analysis, student and teacher attendance, to try to incorporate those insights into the development of the calendar, specifically minimizing the number of short weeks during the school year, since that represented a significantly higher attendance issues during those times. And I will entertain any questions that you might have.
So I heard you mention a number of folks within the district that had input on the calendar, and I'm assuming parents did. I know they did also because the board brought feedback on the calendar as well, in looking at it and developing it. And I think the other note I just wanted to make was that it is important to note that we do have some changes, where we have a full week for fall break, we're going to have a full week at Thanksgiving, and those changes are really tied to earlier presentation this evening, that we're thinking about chronic absenteeism. Because when we have a week where we have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or something like that, we have much higher rates of absenteeism when we have a short week. So in everything we do, we're thinking about those goals that we talked about earlier this evening and focusing on those. And in this case, it's even, I think everyone will appreciate that, full break, have a full week, and take advantage of that however they can. So it kind of has a great benefit too, but it also focuses on our main goal. It's not just so, you can, like I say, go to Borabora, or wherever people are doing with that whole week. So I think that's a positive development. Are there any questions on the calendar item? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robles, and thank you, Board President Schreiber. So we have, our general counsel is going to present item G25, and this is regarding Board Policy 8102 about the naming of school district facilities. And so we'll turn it over to our general counsel, Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. President Schreiber, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here and discuss with you tonight information regarding the proposed revision of Policy 8102 that pertains to the district's naming of facilities. Just a brief overview of what you've received, I believe all the information is in the back of the agenda, if the crowd also wishes to follow along. But as an overview, I want to remind us that we saw some limitations in the policy over the past year, but we also had some strengths. So in developing the policy revisions, the board subcommittee focused very extensively on what they wanted to change, what they wanted to keep, and they tasked staff, that would be me, with reviewing other districts' facilities naming policies. And as we revised documents, the committee looked very intently at the language, providing some good feedback, and we made multiple iterations and present to you tonight the revised policy proposal. The proposed policy retains key components of 8102. You'll see in particular that it reflects the need for a thoughtful deliberation by the board. It also uses an ad hoc committee, as our current policy does, to carefully collect, consider names, as well as recommend proposed names to the board. It also ensures that school names inspire our community and reflect and honor significant achievements. So those are some consistent themes that you will see from our current policy that are reflected in our new policy proposed for you tonight. In addition, the proposed policy makes some improvements. In particular, you'll see that we're clarifying the naming process in greater detail through an accompanying regulation. When I'm looking at the current policy, I see maybe one sentence that talks about the actual process that the ad hoc committee would undertake to make recommendations to the board. We now have a full recommendation, a full regulation that provides more detail to that committee. In addition, we explicitly allow the ad hoc committee to present the board with up to three names for consideration, not just one name, as may have been the implication in the prior existing policy. And finally, we require explicit, multiple opportunities for broad input from not just the school, but also the broad TPS and Tulsa community. There are two stages in essence to the process of naming facilities in the proposed policy and regulation. In the first stage of the naming process, you'll see that the ad hoc committee collects input from the school community so that it can provide up to three to five names as initial proposals. The actual steps are noted for you here. In essence, we're looking at the superintendent initiating the process, the board president creating an ad hoc committee, the committee providing all members of the school community an opportunity for input into names to consider, and then the committee taking... an opportunity for input into names to consider, and then the committee taking those considerations and determining three to five names as initial proposals for more broad input. In the second and final stage, the committee considers wider feedback and narrows the selection of proposed names to no more than three, which the board will consider and act upon. And here are those steps. The members of the school district and Tulsa community receive opportunities to provide feedback on the committee's initial proposals. The committee then narrows their list of names to no more than three. And we also want to make sure that those names actually comply with the naming policy so there's a vetting of the names for eligibility. The superintendent then provides the eligible names to the board for consideration, and the board takes action upon those recommendations, having, you know, no more than three opportunities, well, three names to consider. So in essence, this policy supports the values of Tulsa Public Schools and that it ensures as much clarity, transparency as possible. It reflects the interests the district has in providing as much input as possible into the process and continuing the efforts of the district to have names of our schools that honor the achievement and the best parts of our humanity and achievements in the Tulsa area in particular. So that is in essence the policy before you and the accompanying regulation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board? When this item is on action, we can discuss it further and kind of reflect on some of the ways that we came to this, but we've got injured parties at the table, and I think it'd be better to go through. But I know that we, both Dr. Decker and I, have some input on this for the next meeting.
Great.
So that completes the information agenda, and I know that Ms. Wester had an item for board member reports and concerns.
Thank you, President Schreiber. So those that truly get a chance to know me know that I am for an equitable education and equitable opportunities for students regardless of their ZIP code. So don't make any assumptions based on what I'm about to say. But when I saw the items on the agenda tonight regarding charter schools, I wanted to know, I had a lot of questions. Wanted to know about cost, performance outcomes, requirements, effects on neighborhood schools, and student retention rates. What intrigued me the most was trying to find out why parents transfer their students out of their neighborhood schools regardless of where they're going. Why are their neighborhood schools not up to par in their eyes? So I searched for answers in the parents whose students are in charter schools, and I actually opened it up to anybody to provide me some feedback. I already knew that we have a large number of students transferring out of their neighborhood schools, whether they're attending magnet programs or whether they have the false perceptions that the schools closer to the south provide a better education, or that the state report card is a reflection of the poor education being provided in the neighborhood school. Is our goal as parents to ensure that our children attend an Ivy League school, or is our goal to ensure our children reach their potential and become change agents of our society through a diverse and equitable education? So what I found through the many messages I have received in the last three days is that we truly need to work on educating the public regarding some of the questions I had posed about charters, state report cards, funding for charters, and transfers in our district. We also need to, as a district, figure out the plan to ensure our families feel that it's going to be a very difficult decision to leave their neighborhood schools because their neighborhood schools are truly amazing. Some of the reasons given to me were lack of academic rigor, large classroom sizes, not being able to communicate with the teacher in a more personable way, unhealthy school climate and culture via misbehavior, disrespect, or bullying, misunderstanding of the state report cards, and lack of belief in their children's potential. None of the charter schools on tonight's agenda reside on district two. However, I'm still interested in knowing how many districts whose students have transferred out of their neighborhood schools to attend other schools, whether it's charter, magnet schools, or neighborhood schools outside of our neighborhoods. I am also interested in learning more about the long-term plan as a district to start working and making sure that all of our schools, regardless of ZIP code, can receive a stellar education where graduating from high school and having a successful post-secondary plan are goals that start as early as pre-K and continue on through high school, where every school staff member is all in to make the education of each student a positive and fruitful experience, where differentiated instruction and real-life alignment is at the core of lesson planning so that every student, regardless of their performance level, receives the necessary rigor to propel them forward and encourages them. I'm not saying that this is not already happening because I do know for a fact there are a lot of teachers out there that are doing exactly what I just explained. But after listening to quarter one reviews, we have some great strides that we've accomplished. There are some great things that have happened. We came from very, very far behind, and we still have a long ways to go. How do we instill that purpose and that joy back into every school staff member, from custodians to clerks to teachers and administrators? I think it is up to all of us to provide a well-rounded education for every child that when families walk into their neighborhood school, they get to experience and feel the same thing that kids and families that move out of the neighborhood schools feel or are in search for. So this is a very delicate dilemma because while we get to destination excellence, many families will still leave their neighborhood schools in search for that belonging or academic rigor. So what do we do so students don't fall through the cracks in our system? And I wanted to express this because these are extremely tough questions that I've been dealing with since before I became a board member. And I think we need to set some time to actually go through those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wester. Ms. Keller.
Thank you. I want to save most of my comments. I think for maybe the December 3 board meeting, and THA certainly gave me a lot to think about this evening, and I would like to process those thoughts. But to continue on Ms. Wester's comments about neighborhood schools and in the defense of neighborhood schools, I want to make absolute certain that everybody knows that East Central is in fact an exceptional option for our students. They have worked really hard over the last six years to improve the rigor, their courses, the behavior, their graduation rate. They have made incredible strides. They offer over 23 AP courses with over 300 kids taking over 500 tests. That is amazing. They are behind Booker T., Edison, and Memorial as far as TPS schools are concerned. They have worked very hard, and I think to not acknowledge that would be a disservice to both the leaders of the school and the teachers there that put in the work every single day to make sure that East Central High School is a place that kids are proud to come and that kids succeed when they leave there. So I wanted, I didn't want to miss the opportunity, since you mentioned neighborhood schools, to put that plug in. I want to make sure that they're not overlooked in this process.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Any other board member comments or concerns? We don't have any citizens' comments this evening, and that'll bring us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to first say that I really appreciate Board Member Wester and Board Member Keller's comments, and specifically, Board Member Keller. I think there was actually some language in that agenda item that did not take into consideration the really exceptional work that is happening at East Central High School, and that was a miss on our part, I think, in the effort to talk about the great work that's happening at Tulsa Honor Academy. I think it failed to recognize the work that's happening in East Tulsa at East Central, and I'm glad that you brought that up because they do have some really exciting and exceptional work that's been developing there for many years. So we're excited about what they're doing there. I also want to just say thank you to the board. I'm really grateful for your approval of item E15. You know, we've been talking about this work with Educare for a year now. It was actually November 2017 when we first started talking publicly about that item. And I just, you know, the work that happens in our Educares in Tulsa with our littlest Tulsans, our little babies, all the way to the three-year-olds, is so important for them to be prepared for pre-kindergarten in our schools and to come better prepared, and they do. And the work that's happening in those Educares is quite exceptional. And the investment that is made by Educare and by the George Kaiser Family Foundation in the Educares is not just in the fact that they are partnering with us to contribute half of the capital funds to build the facility, but in fact will be contributing $16 million a year to run the four Educares that they have. And that's the annual operating budget for those Educares, and that's just a really important thing for us to acknowledge. And then lastly, I just want to make sure everyone knows that we have applications available for the 2019-2020 Tulsa Teacher Corps. As you know, this has been our first year of Tulsa Teacher Corps. This is a teacher preparation program run by Tulsa Public Schools, and it's designed to train and place educators in our district classrooms, just for us. And the Tulsa Teacher Corps launched this year, as I said, with 75 teachers. They participated in a very rigorous summer program, and then during the year, when they started in their own classrooms, they have additional support throughout the year. It's an accelerated tuition-free program that provides intensive coaching, training, self-guided coursework, and also one-on-one mentoring with experienced teachers, and they also have hands-on classroom experiences. The corps members who successfully complete the six-week summer training and meet our requirements then are placed in a classroom in Tulsa Public Schools and have a full teacher salary and compensation benefits for those teachers. And people can find out about this program at www.tulsschools.org/TTC, Tulsa Teacher Corps. And eligible candidates must hold a bachelor's degree from an accredited college or university with a minimum GPA of 2.5 and meet the employment requirements for the district. Once they're accepted, they'll spend about 15 to 20 hours completing some coursework in the spring, and then they start the summer program. And that's an in-class program that happens from 7:30 to 3:30, Monday through Friday. And those who meet all of those requirements and demonstrate that they are ready to be a successful part of Team Tulsa, to lead students, to have the personal and social and academic skills they need for success, will be then prioritized for one of the jobs that we have in Tulsa Public Schools. So I wanted to make sure everyone knew that applications were now available for Tulsa Teacher Corps. And that concludes my remarks, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. We don't have any nonroutine items this evening. Mr. Wade, any new business? We have no new business. That'll bring us to our announcements. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, December 3, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Sheryl Selman Room at the Education Service Center, 3027 South New Haven Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faye.
Aye.
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 Aye, meaning adjourned.